To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, September 13, 2022. I would like to invite Reverend Paul Clerval from West Presbyterian Church in Burbank to lead us in invocation this evening. Welcome Reverend.
Thanks, Jesse. Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather here, prepared to do the people's business, let us never forget the privilege of standing and serving in this mosh pit of democracy. Let us hold out hope that good will come and righteousness will reign. We give thanks, Lord, for our city workers, our firefighters, our teachers, our police, our schools, for our social workers and invaluable nonprofit members, for our workers and businesses, and if I may, for our clergy and our congregations. Finally, Lord, we give thanks for these people on this dais who guide this city by right of our vote. Be with and protect their families, and let their conscience be a reminder of whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, excellent, or praiseworthy. Let their minds be kept on that. In the name of the one who spoke the world to be, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Leading us in the flag salute this evening is Mrs. Kathy Wills-Sarna. She has been teaching in Burbank for 25 years and currently teaches kindergarten at Roosevelt Elementary School. Mrs. Wills-Sarna was born in Canada and recently became a United States citizen. In celebration of her citizenship, Mrs. Wills-Sarna will lead us in the flag salute. Will everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome.
Thank you. There's nothing that gives me more pleasure than to bring some of my current students, my former students, my future students to do this pledge with me. And I've been teaching about America for a long time, and now I'm an American.
Perfect.
So here we go. Are you ready? Please put your right hand over your heart and look at the flag and think about your patriotic fervor. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frutos.
Here.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Here.
Mayor Talamontes.
Present.
Thank you.
We would like to advise the community that there will be one period of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you would like to participate in general public comment over the phone, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Before we continue the meeting, I would like to have a moment of silence for Queen Elizabeth II. The city of Burbank is saddened by her passing on September 8, 2022. Our community joins the United Kingdom and the entire world as we mourn her passing and remember her 70 years of service. Please join me as we honor her life with a moment of silence. We have seven announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for September 13, 2022. Due to an emergency repair by the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California to the Upper feeder Pipeline, the pipeline that carries water from the Colorado River, both Burbank residents and businesses will need to put outdoor irrigation on hold from September 6 through September 20. During this time, Burbank will be 100% dependent on the state water project, thus resulting in the immediate suspension of outdoor irrigation from September 6 through September 20. For questions and/or more information, please visit www.burbankwaterandpower.com or call In response to the Metropolitan Water District Upper feeder Pipeline repair, Burbank Water and Power will offer free recycled water to residents and businesses. Recycled water is highly treated wastewater that should only be used for watering landscapes. A community recycled water fill station will be open to the public during September 6 through September 20. The fill station is located by George Isaiah Park at 1110 West Clark Avenue. Residents and businesses can bring in 100 to 300 gallon buckets and fill with recycled water to use on their trees, gardens, and plants. More information can be found on the Burbank Water and Power website at burbankwaterandpower.com/h2o2go. The California High Speed Rail Authority has released the draft environmental document for the more than 30 mile segment between Palmdale and Burbank. The project section will connect two key population centers in Los Angeles County, the Antelope Valley, and the San Fernando Valley by linking future multimodal transportation hubs in Palmdale and Burbank. The public is invited to the online open house on October 6 from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. The public is also invited to the public hearing on October 18 from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. More information about the project and events are available on the city's website under News. The Burbank Domestic Violence Task Force, in partnership with the Family Service Agency, Burbank YMCA Social Impact Center, Zonta Club of Burbank Area, and the Burbank Police Department, is hosting the Domestic Violence Community Awareness Workshops. Each workshop will cover different topics around domestic violence, including recognizing different forms of abuse, impact of domestic violence on the community, connection between domestic violence and human trafficking, and more. The final workshop will include a simulation exercise titled "In Her Shoes," where participants will experience the journey of a domestic violence victim. For more information, please visit the city's calendar at www.burbankca.gov. Lifting people up citywide, the city of Burbank's and Home Again LA's Free Support Services and Resources Program invites the community to attend the next community workshop and learn about financial planning, including topics like savings and budgeting. The workshop will take place on Thursday, September 15 from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Burbank Chamber of Commerce or via Zoom. To reserve a spot or to learn more, email lisa@homeagainla.org. The Burbank Animal Shelter needs loving foster homes and adopters for their dogs and kittens. Adoptions for senior pets, bonded pairs, and long-term residents are 50% off, and adoption fees for veterans are waived completely. If you're looking for a way to help but not ready to commit to adopting, contact the Burbank Animal Shelter to learn more about fostering. Fostering helps pets become better adjusted, less stressed, and gives them a better chance of finding their ideal home. The volunteers of the Burbank Animal Shelter cover the costs of food, supplies, and veterinary services. Contact the Burbank Animal Shelter for more information at 818-238-3340 or email burbankanimalshelter@burbankca.gov. September is Library Card Sign-Up Month, and the Burbank Public Library is having a social media contest from September 11 through September 17. Reading can take us on journeys around the world, back in time or into the future. Post an answer to this question, "Where does your library card take you?", and you will be entered in our daily random drawing for a library bag made from recycled plastic bottles. Details are on our website, www.burbanklibrary.org. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
We have two council presentations on the agenda this evening. The first presentation is a proclamation declaring September 15 through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Burbank. I invite Señora Jackie Amaya García to join me at the podium. Señora Jackie is Colombian-American. Come on up. She is a 17-year Burbank resident and owner and project director of Cultural Bytes in Burbank, a language immersion program teaching Spanish, French, and Mandarin. Wow, amazing. Señora Jackie is a founder of the Parent Center at Burbank High School, served as president of the District English Advisory Committee, and is a current member of the Burbank Chamber of Commerce. Welcome. Let me read that. Yeah, let's start with that, and I'll have you share some reading with me. So whereas each year, Americans affirm National Heritage Month from September 15 to October 15 by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America, and whereas what began with the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968 was expanded in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to cover a 30-day period from September 15 to October 15. And whereas the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month coincides with the anniversary of independence for many Hispanic and Latin American countries such as Mexico, Belize, Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Nicaragua, that's it. And you can go ahead with this. And Hispanic Americans are the largest minority group in the United States today, with a population of more than 60 million and 15 million in the state of California alone. And Hispanic Americans have made countless contributions to American culture and embody the best of American values, including commitment to faith, family, and country. And generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous, and have served in critical sectors of the American economy and American life, from skilled trades and professional occupations to the military and law enforcement. Whereas the city of Burbank celebrates its diversity, has over a dozen boards and commission members of Hispanic descent, and over a third of its city workforce is composed of Hispanic Americans, and whereas Hispanic Americans make up almost a quarter of Burbank's population and an integral part of our residential, school, and business community. Now therefore, I, Jesse Talamontes, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim September 15, 2022, to October 15, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Burbank to commemorate the influence and contributions of Hispanic Americans on our community. Signed this 13th day of September, 2022, Jesse Talamontes, Mayor of Burbank. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Burbank Councilmembers. I have a few words. First of all, thank you very much for asking me to accept this year's proclamation of the Hispanic Heritage Month. As a Colombian-American, I am honored to represent the community this year, and I appreciate the city's efforts in that regard. Hispanic Heritage Month must be unique to each individual, and it is definitely a beautiful opportunity to exhibit our uniqueness. But before I go any farther, I'd like to remind you that the Spanish is the official language of 21 nations, including Spain and Equatorial Guinea in Africa. And just as there are variances between the East and the West Coast and the Northern and the Southern states in the United States, distinct differences exist in these 21 nations. And as a result, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, there is a flood of rich varieties of cultures that rush forth like the swarm of monarch butterflies. Our city's dual immersion schools and small companies and great individuals in the culinary sector, healthcare, real estate, government, and so on, present Hispanic heritage culture in such a beautiful and astounding way that children, families, and the entire city is saturated by this scent. What a wonderful time to savor delectable and traditional foods in our city, vibrant restaurants, bars, and homes. Hispanic Heritage Month is also an excellent opportunity to become acquainted with artists and authors who speak about Hispanic identity and the battle to be seen, acknowledged, and heard. But don't we all suffer like this? One of the reasons I'm honored of this is that this proclamation is among many chances is a opportunity to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month for a month because I'm here to accept it. Because we're not hidden, but rather in plain sight. So individuals around us, including our city's mayor, Jesse Talamontes, and councilmember Bob Frutos, as well as the industrious people in the many sectors of the economy, all the business founded by people and with the support of people of Hispanic and Latino heritage. That's why I want to spotlight them, each of them, by visiting as many individuals, places, and businesses and organizations as I can this month to convey this proclamation. And this way, it is properly also theirs because we all represent them, and we're everywhere. And when I share my proclamation with the community, perhaps I will report back on my experience. I'm sure I'll see many, many unique mixes of Hispanic and Latino cultures mingled with other equally diverse cultures that compromise our city, such as American, Armenian, Asian, African-American, Middle Eastern, and European. Thank you for giving us the chance to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And, and as a sign of gratitude, that's the most important part, is I'd like to give each one of you the chance to enjoy a few of the main representations from the different countries celebrating this month their independence. This was motivated by their independence. As the founder of Cultural Bytes, the most interactive language program for the kids, offering classes in person and online, we've built our program around the importance of connecting kids with culture to the language which comes alive. Learn the culture, learn the language. So this is what I want to give you. Okay? Each one of you will receive, and this is an example of all the things that come from these different countries, the flag, the instruments, the birds. So thank you very much for celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you. You know, I'd like to share a personal note. I've got five grandkids and two grandkids that live in Huntington Beach. One of them is a second, going to second grade, and the other one's going into kindergarten. The second grader has been in a Spanish immersion class for the last three years, and my younger one that's going into kindergarten is starting that as well. So it's amazing. There you go. You know, I've always said that the more languages you know, the better you get around the world, and obviously you create friends around the world. So once again, thank you very much. And congratulations. Thank you. Take care. So the second presentation is a proclamation declaring September 20, 2022, as National Voter Registration Day in the city of Burbank. I would like to invite our very own Burbank City Clerk, Suzette Mullins, to join me at the podium. So the proclamation reads, "National Voter Registration Day. Whereas one of the most fundamental and sacred rights of any democracy is the right to vote, in order for our government to function effectively and respond to the needs of our people, all citizens can and must play a role in shaping it. And whereas each year on National Voter Registration Day, we reaffirm the strong sense of civic pride among our people and encourage friends, family members, and neighbors to get involved in civic life by registering to vote. And whereas democracy is not a spectator sport, if we are serious about improving our country and ensuring our government reflects our values, we cannot afford to sit out on Election Day. Unfortunately, among those who are eligible to vote, too many choose not to. Far too many people disenfranchise themselves by not getting involved."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas when we do take full advantage of the right to vote, we not only give away our voices, our power, our ability to shape the future of the country we love, we also do disservice to the generations of Americans before us who risk everything, including their lives, to protect this fundamental aspect of our republic. And whereas heroic things happen when people get involved, our government is only as strong as what we put into it, and it's only reflective of the will of our citizens when we exercise our right to vote.
Now therefore, I, Jesse Talamontes, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim September 20 as National Voter Registration Day. In recognition for us to carry forward the tradition of promoting voter registration and civic engagement, we commit to exercising one of the most precious of our democratic rights and remember that the task of perfecting our union belongs to us all. I call upon all residents of the city of Burbank to observe this day by ensuring they are registered to vote, and not only registered to vote, but voting on the day of or through the mail. Signed this 13th day of September, 2022, Jesse Talamontes, Mayor of Burbank." Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'd like to invite Melissa and the staff, Alyssa and See You, to come up here. Because this definitely, the proclamation is a team effort of the staff of the city clerk's office, as you stated, that registering to vote is very, very important and to practice the democratic process and be out there, not only to register, but to also practice the voting and showing up to the polls. One of our biggest responsibilities in the city clerk's office is to engage our community and to reach out to every community member to get them participating in this process. And we're doing so by promoting the voter registration outreach and taking advantage of that date to really go highlight what is required for the residents of Burbank to register to vote. So in doing so, we are working, we teamed up with Burbank Unified School District, and we worked with their staff in getting out flyers to all the parents and the students in the district. So that's going to reach many, many households to get them aware of the importance of registered to vote. We also will be showing up at Farmer's Market on specific date. I know we're going on September 17, and we're also going in October, both on October 15. And those are the dates before the final date to register to vote, which is October 24. So remember this date. If you have moved, changed your name, have done anything whatsoever to make your voter registration no longer valid, please go back to lavote.org and register to vote. The other things that you'll start seeing throughout the city, we will be placing about 325 vote signs, yard signs, throughout the whole entire community. You'll see them through Chandler, you'll see them through our parks, and that will bring awareness to the residents there is an election going on. In addition to that, we will be placing also banners over Magnolia and Olive Bridges, and that would be visible to the public. You'll be driving back and forth and remembering that you got to do something when the election comes up on November 8. So there's many, many programs. The staff here is doing an amazing job, working really hard on getting the word out, working with your community, with the communities, and working with the business communities to remind everyone that this is very important for not only the city, but for our countries to participate. So thank you all, and make sure you tell your neighbors, your friends, everyone you know, to remind them this is an important participation in the voter registration. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, Madam City Clerk, for that PSA. So picture.
It is important.
It is? No, it is important. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything to report for tonight.
Thank you. We have one presentation on the agenda this evening. I welcome California State Senator Anthony Portantino to provide us a state and local legislative update and information about the Burbank-Lendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust. Welcome, Mr. Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a double honor to be here today, first as your senator, but also as a newly minted Burbank resident. On July 6, my family moved to Burbank, so I'm very proud of that. And I've been told that since I've been to Talleyrand five times, that that officially makes me a Burbank resident.
Definitely, yes.
Also proud to have joined Burbank Kiwanis and St. Finbar. And so we are immersing ourselves in the community, and obviously my wife and I are looking forward to doing more and getting more active as we continue to live here. So thank you for welcoming me into your city.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Frutos, I just want to thank you for your service on the city council and all of the work you've done. I know that neither of you are on the ballot this time, and so your tenure is going to come to a close, but know that you've made a tremendous positive impact to the community. So I just want to say thank you for your service as you pursue your next pursuits. So thank you.
Thank you.
This has been a long... Oh, the other thing I want to say, I was kind of cool when I was home today, changing to come to the council. I heard this noise on my street that I hadn't heard in like 25 years. It was an ice cream truck. And I actually was running around my house going, "Where, what is that music? Where's that music coming from?" And it was really cool that there was an ice cream truck going down my street. So I haven't experienced that in a while, so that was also cool.
Yeah, we have everything here in Burbank.
You do. You do. I can't complain. So far, so good. So I also want to acknowledge you this year... So I also want to acknowledge this year, you know, obviously because of COVID, we haven't done this in a while, and so it's good to be back to share with all of you and to see all of you in person. This year, I was pleased to name the 25th Senate District Woman of the Year, Leila Ramirez, who obviously knows Mayor Marsha Ramos's late mom. And so we were able to honor her as our Woman of the Year this year for her passing. And so that was very, very poignant, and obviously she well deserved activist, both in Burbank and Glendale. And then the 25th District Small Business of the Year was Blast from the Past. And so I was pleased to honor Blast from the Past. And if you haven't gone to one of their comedy nights once a month, it's really a fun place to go. And obviously, as a kid of the 70s, all of the nostalgia and memorabilia, it's a fun place, so. And then everything they do for the Magnolia Park Improvement Association is also laudable. So was very happy to do that. I do want to give a shout out to Arda, because you see her much more than you see me. I like to say she works for a living, so I don't have to. And Arda does a great job representing Burbank. So thank you, Arda, for all of your service.
Yes, thank you, Arda.
Absolutely. And obviously, if you know her, you know how to get to her. And if you haven't met her, please take the time to get to know Arda, because she's the front line of our operation in Burbank and does a fantastic job. As you know, as a legislator, my, and I'm a dad more than anything else, and so I focus on education, mental health, gun reform, and obviously support for the entertainment industry, which is also a big part of the Burbank economy. Last year, we were able to get a increase and extension of the, excuse me, an increase to the production tax credit of $180 million. The governor signed that last year. We also created a new tax credit to build new studio space. And Universal Studios was the first out of the gate to start constructing new stages. Jess, you and I are probably the only ones old enough to know that the life cycle of a soundstage is 100 years.
Thank you very much.
And if you build it, they will have productions for 100 years. And so our early tax credits have been so successful that we've run out of soundstage. And so by creating more space, we're actually going to create more jobs and more benefit to the entertainment industry. So we created $150 million tax credit specifically to build stages. There was also a diversity component in that as well. The studios will get more tax dollars or more of a bang for their buck if their productions are more diverse. And so there's an extra incentive on diversity within the entertainment industry, which is important. The governor will announce in his January budget, the extension of the tax credit. And so that's also a significant improvement on how negotiations have gone in the past. They've always come down in August at the end of a legislative cycle. And this year, to have the governor's commitment to propose it in his January budget is extremely significant. So he's going to propose the extension and work with my office on implementing whatever policy changes that we're going to make to the program. So that's an exciting thing. I know the last two years have been, Pickwick has been on everybody's mind, and it's no surprise. I think the city was right, and I think HCD was wrong, and I told them that. So I just want to say that, my opinion that HCD was wrong, and I wish I could do something about that. And I've let them know my displeasure with how they've interpreted SB 35. And so, you know, my support to the city as you move forward with that project. Obviously, the 5 freeway and the bridge have been something that the city has had to deal with for years. And again, I want to give a big shout out to Arda for bird-daring in Caltrans since I've been in office for six years. She's been on the phone and been a great go-to. And your staff, Mr. City Managers, worked very closely with her and Supervisor Barker's office, and I think it's made a difference. Obviously, in June, when the CTC committed $54 million to help complete, the project was a big step, and I was happy to join. I think, Mayor, you testified that day as well. Yeah, we both testified in support of that. I know the, there's some lingering issues over the sound wall that the developer wants to finance, and we've been talking to both Caltrans and MTA, because Caltrans says this and MTA says that, and you're stuck in the middle. But we sort of been talking to both of them to sort of get to the bottom of it. And basically, I believe they're waiting for the city to sort of do an official response at this point. I know that there's been a dialogue back and forth and requests for further information. And so they've told us as soon as the city responds formally, you've given us a letter, but you have to send them the letter and detail your concerns. From what I see as the biggest issue, it's a liability issue. So a question, I guess, for your city attorney to talk to them about, they're a little bit hesitant to allow a private contractor to come onto their right of way and construct something, because then that would create an inherent liability. So I think if somehow you can get through the liability issue, I think there's a window of opportunity. But I think that's the biggest issue. And I know Councilmember Schultz, being an attorney, knows what I'm talking about, that you know, if state agency allows a private entity onto state property, there's an assumption of risk there. And so we have to deal through that. But first step is we have to create a formal response back to Caltrans on what the city wants to do and why the city wants to do it. And obviously, from what I understand, the developer is willing to fund it. But something this community wants, so let's see if we can continue to facilitate that. On specific legislative highlights, I'm glad we talked about dual immersion this year or during Spanish or Latino Heritage Month, because one of the bills that came to my attention, or the ideas for a bill that came to my attention during COVID, was in Pasadena, they were canceling dual immersion classes because they didn't have teachers. So they didn't have a Spanish-speaking math teacher, for example. And so the parents in dual immersion classes were feeling left out, because those were the first classes being canceled. And so we came up with a, I think, a pretty, pretty good idea to say that school districts can share their resources. So if you have a high school that has space in a classroom, and you have another high school that has children that need the class, they can work collaboratively, and they don't have to go to the county, they don't have to go to the state, there's no bureaucracy. So the schools can work and determine, you know, we're going to share students in this class, you'll take students in this class, and therefore the money is a wash, or we're going to charge you X or not charge you X or give you access to a field. Take all of the bureaucracy out of the equation. And so for STEM and immersion classes, if the governor signs the bill, school districts will be able to make this cooperative agreement on their own. And I think it's a, anytime you cut red tape, I mean, I'm sure all the city staff likes that. Anytime you cut red tape, things are better. Another idea came to me by parents of, mostly adopted parents of children with fetal alcohol syndrome. For some reason, in schools, if you have fetal alcohol syndrome, you don't get your own IEP, only if you have other issues that warrant an IEP. But you don't get an IEP specific to fetal alcohol syndrome. And so those children aren't getting the care, because they're not getting the diagnosis. And so we have a bill on the governor's desk to create a separate category in the IEP for fetal alcohol syndrome children. A bill that the Glendale Environmental Coalition came to me, there was a pilot program in the Glendale School District where they got, again, I'm old enough to remember when we actually ate in classroom or in school cafeterias on plates and had forks and knives. We didn't, everything wasn't paper. Somebody in the 80s had some bright idea and said it would be more sanitary to get rid of all the plates and knives, and let's go to paper. And what did that do? Create a ton of waste and a ton of custodial costs and, you know, all kinds of environmental impacts from the disposable paper goods. And so they did a pilot in Glendale School District where they got these high-energy dishwashers. And they went out and they repurchased the plates, knives, and forks, and they saw that time, money, and environment were all improved by that pilot program. So we have a bill on the governor's desk to create a statewide program to retrofit school cafeterias again with dishwashers. And again, it would teach kids about sustainability as well as being better for the environment. So that's on the governor's desk. Mental health challenges are exponential pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. Everything we knew, we've been reinforced. We have a situation where as many as three out of five teenagers think about suicide. That wasn't that way when I was a kid, but now it's a real issue. In particular, LGBT youth think about suicide much more so than they ever should. And so there's a bill to create a grant program for every high school to get $250,000 a year to do student wellness on campus. So I'm hoping the governor signs that. I did tell the city manager I was going to cover a lot of ground today, so I apologize. It's been a long time, so we've got a lot to talk about. Public safety, again, I want to commend the city for its moratorium on gun stores. You're right, and there is an overconcentration of permits in the city, and there are a lot of federal preemptions and state preemptions that have made that happen. But you're right to put a freeze on it. And as you know, Linda Besson and I met with Attorney General Bonta, spoke to the governor directly. The governor was amazed when I said there are 14 stores in Burbank, because really? And Attorney General Bonta had the same reaction. And so I want to reiterate a letter I sent to the mayor, that if you want any opinions or want any, you know, the attorney general to opine or to talk with you, I'm happy to facilitate any conversations with the attorney general's office to do that, because they were alarmed, as am I, as your senator and as a Burbank resident. I was pleased that the governor fast-tracked SB 906. We saw in the Midwest, when a school district received notice that a campus was under imminent threat of violence, and they didn't do anything about it. And you can see in a community where a principal or a superintendent might say, that doesn't happen here, or what if we're wrong, and might hesitate. And so under SB 906, if a school receives information of a credible threat, they must investigate. The second piece of it is, school districts must educate their community, their families about safe storage. I wrote in pass California's Safe Storage Laws, and this has an education component about the importance of safe storage. Because we know somewhere of 70% of the school shooters get those weapons from an unlocked weapon in the house. And so if they're not properly stored and they get into the wrong hands, bad things can happen. And so that's what SB 906 does. President Biden, when he celebrated the bipartisan gun reform legislation, actually commented that safe storage should be a national approach, that that's something on his list to accomplish. But I'm proud that California has it. The governor also signed SB 1327, which creates a private right of action to go after ghost guns and some of the illegal high-capacity guns that fall into the wrong hands and are used in these mass shootings. It's modeled on what happened in Texas, where they created a private right of action to go after abortion doctors or abortion clinics. And frankly, if you can use a private right of action to go after women's healthcare, we should be able to use it to keep guns out of the wrong hands. And the California law, which I'm a joint author of, says if the Supreme Court throws out the Texas law, then our law gets thrown out as well. So it's the right thing to do, and it makes a statement that if you're going to say, if you're going to empower the public to punish women, let's empower the public to keep guns out of the wrong hands. So the governor signed SB 1327. Unfortunately, we came up one vote short on SB 918, which is California's answer to the Supreme Court decision on the Bruin decision. And so we're going to bring that back again. And basically, the Supreme Court set unconcealed carry permits, you can't have arbitrary criteria. And so, but they said you can have concrete criteria, which criminal history, domestic violence, posting threats. So this would codify how you implement the granting of these permits statewide. So it would no longer be subject to each sheriff would have their own discretionary approval, it would be one set of standards. The Supreme Court also said that you can regulate places, so you can have a prohibited place. So for example, city council can say, we, you know, there are no guns in public buildings, no guns at schools, no guns at Dodger Stadium. The Supreme Court says you can have prohibited places. And so 918 lists prohibited places in it. And so we're going to bring that back on December 5th. I've already talked to the governor and the attorney general, so we're going to reintroduce that bill on. Basically, we had it as an urgency ordinance, and it came up one vote short as an urgency. We had enough votes on a simple majority, but under Prop 72, I think it was, you have to have a 72-hour, Prop 54, you had to have a 72-hour window to amend the bill. And since we were at the legislative deadline, we didn't have 72 hours to withdraw the urgency piece. So we're going to bring it back on December 5th. I mentioned fetal alcohol syndrome on healthcare, Health and Human Services. Again, and I know Councilmember Anthony has been a big advocate of our efforts on autism. There's a flaw in California insurance law that only one treatment for autism is covered. And so if you're a parent of an autistic child, and your child responds well to other treatments, you have to pay out of pocket for that. And so we have a bill that says a doctor-prescribed, evidence-based, medically necessary treatment should be covered by insurance. I don't know if the governor's going to sign it. It's been vetoed a couple times. The organization that has the monopoly on coverage fights it, because they have a monopoly on coverage. And so, but we have it on the governor's desk again. Yeah, no, and I know you've been a big advocate as well for that and really rallied the troops. And so we're going to keep fighting that battle. Another healthcare bill that I mentioned, because it came from a constituent, something I didn't know, that, you know, you go, when a woman goes to get her routine mammogram every year, that's a covered insurance expense. But if the doctor sees an abnormality and says you need an additional image, you need an MRI or you need a follow-up mammogram, those additional images are not covered by insurance. And so many women sit there and go, do I want to pay out of pocket $800 or risk not getting diagnosed, because, you know, maybe it's not that bad? And as you know, undetected issues become more problematic, and if you have early detection, your survival rate is increased. So we have a bill to say those follow-up, again, doctor-prescribed imaging would be covered by your insurance. And that was a suggestion from a constituent in an email who would face that dilemma. And I read the email, and I said, you know what, we've got to do something about it. I could, another issue, again, we're talking about what the pandemic highlighted, is the medical discrepancies of different communities, in particular, communities of color that didn't have access to certain healthcare coverages. Same thing with overall cancer treatment, the disparities with Medi-Cal patients that don't have access to a City of Hope, for example. And so we have a bill that says Medi-Cal patients have access to the most cutting-edge cancer centers. And so that's on the governor's desk, and we worked out a deal with the insurance companies. So we're hoping he signs that, because again, why should one person have access to City of Hope and/or whatever, or Norris, or whatever the other cancer research facilities are, and another person not have access? So we're trying to deal with some of those disparities as they come along. On the environment, again, I spoke about our dishwasher bill. It's a little bill that I'm very, very proud of. I hope it gets signed. We have a bill to streamline some of the SEQA issues on projects that have already gone through environmental review, not having a duplicated process. If we want to meet our climate goals, we actually have to build the projects that get us there. And so this helps us build more green projects faster. So I'm hoping the governor signs that. As you know, I used to be 314 pounds two years ago. I don't know if you all know that, but I used to be 314 pounds.
He was a big senator.
I was a big senator. I like to say I'm a giver, and I tried to give away as much as possible. But I also became a bike rider during the pandemic, what they call a pandemic peddler. By the way, I ride into Griffith Park every morning now, and it's been a lot of fun and getting to know a whole new community that I bike. I actually made it up to the Castaway twice. And that's a big hill, so I've done that.
Was your bike electric?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you, Jess, for that. But it's been, it's been a good, you know, two years of getting healthy. I've been working with a lot of the bike communities on SB 932, which would help cities implement their plans, their bike and pedestrian plans. And there's money attached to it. So Burbank should, if the governor signs it, get in line to try to get some of those resources. And that's one of the observations I've made, is I cross city boundaries. Some cities have a lot of protected bike lanes. When I came down, the other day, I went up to La Cañana, around Sunland de Hanga and came through, and I had not been on Hollywood Way, and the dedicated bike lane on Hollywood Way was really cool. And then same thing on the Chandler Bike Path. So I got to use what you've done there. Hopefully, we give you more resources to expand bike and pedestrian friendly plans. So that's on the governor's desk. And then obviously, we want to talk about SB 1177. I was proud that Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena came and said, we want to do affordable housing, we want to create a housing trust. And so the governor signed that, and I was able to get $23 million to the three cities to do affordable housing. And thank you for, you know, I was pleased that you guys came to me with that idea. And so it's really, it's cutting edge. There's a lot of competition of housing trusts out there, and there's a lot of unsettling winds. You know, LA wants to take the money from other cities, and there's those of us who fight that, and especially when cities are doing good things. And Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena are really serious about meeting your housing goals. I mean, that's the key, is if you have a city that's earnestly doing it, why Pickwick made me so mad? Because you're doing so many things elsewhere. You know, HCD should have recognized your efforts. And so I'll continue to be an ally in that. And then one thing I do want to mention, and I want to give Councilmember Springer a shout out, she took me to the community garden, was that two years ago? About a year ago? She took me to the community garden kickoff, and of course, that was the day they found out that there was the pipe underneath, so it was a sort of a somber kickoff. But Burbank has two community gardens, and I was able to skewer $150,000, $75,000 each for the two community gardens in Burbank. And so going to be working with a nonprofit that Councilmember Springer introduced me to. And so we'll be excited about, and $75,000 to a community garden is a lot of money. And for me... And for me, I try to find the small things that have big impact. And, you know, you give seventy-five thousand dollars to the, you know, one of those major national nonprofits, it's not that big a deal. But you give it to a community garden, and it makes a difference. And so thank you for introducing me, and I'm happy to have facilitated that. So that was, I told you, I had a surprise announcement. That was my surprise announcement. There's a whole bunch of other legislation, but I think we've covered a lot of it. The budget this year, schools got the biggest amount of money they'd ever gotten in history. It's still not enough. But certainly, we increased school spending. We've increased spending on mental health. We've, the housing budget, there's billions of dollars going towards housing, for small business relief. It, we, we tried to do what we could to get through the pandemic. And I know the city and its residents were resilient. And I know ARDA did a ton of casework, and my team did a ton of casework on EDD claims, small business applications, the number of grant applications we helped facilitate. And so we're there to help. The city is in a great position to capitalize on a lot of that. And so whatever we can do to facilitate, but the budget was healthy. And so please be aggressive in how you you apply, and we'll be aggressive in how we advocate. So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you have any questions, council members have any questions or comments, because we do want to do a presentation with your permission.
Yes, we do. I just want to thank you for all that good news. There's a lot of good news in your presentation, and keep it coming. Now, especially now that you're a resident. You don't have to drive us far.
Exactly. It was really cool to not get on a freeway to go to City Hall.
But, you know, ARDA has been a godsend. She is so easy to work with, and she's always available, not only to council members, but to our staff as well. Through this period of the bridge, you know, there's a lot of headaches. I was there ten years ago at the groundbreaking.
And I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, you and Councilmember Springer attended all those meetings. I mean, you were the subcommittee. So you, you, you guys did a lot of work, too.
It's coming to a close. And thank you for the extra monies, obviously, to finish it up and make it look good. Colleagues, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for helping us through the pandemic, helping our residents, our businesses, and help with the EDD claims. It was stressful for so many people. And thank you for funding the community gardens. Those got started like ten years ago, and there's an amazing team taking them across the finish line. And thank you for the Housing JPA, for funding that very generously. And we'll use it wisely, our portion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, should we, oh, Councilmember Prudus?
I just want, I just want to take this opportunity publicly to acknowledge you. I still have the red spoon that you gave.
My pasta scooper.
Your pasta spoon.
I got two of them.
But I use that as a symbol that you've always been available to me on your personal cell phone, speaking on Saturdays, or seeing you at community events, pulling you to the side. I want to acknowledge you publicly that your relationship, not just as a politician, but as a friend that cares of what is the quality of life issues for the residents here in Burbank, you have made my life easier as a voice up in Sacramento. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just want to say, you're not officially a Burbank resident until you walk into the wrong AMC that you've purchased a ticket for. And then you'll be a member of the community, so.
I did navigate the Costco parking lot yesterday.
Hey, there you go.
And it took, I had to go around twice before I got to the right.
Isn't that amazing?
It was a little bit confusing to go to Costco, just telling you. So if that, if that helps me get anything.
You have to have a lot of patience.
Yes.
The end result is great. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Senator, thank you very much for the presentation. You just listed a litany of legislation that you're pushing forward to fight for our community. I agree with Councilmember Prudus. We are very lucky to have you, sir. And a special thank you for the tax credits for the entertainment industry, which really are, as you know, the foundation of our local economy. I also wanted to say thank you, because as if you didn't have enough to do already, you were the leading voice in Sacramento in terms of combating gun violence and responding to some of the developments with SCOTUS. I did have just one question, if I might, Mr. Mayor. Senate Bill nine eighteen was a disappointment that it fell to one vote short. I know you mentioned you're reintroducing it December fifth. What can cities like Burbank do, or anyone who's watching on TV, or here in the audience, what can we do to help you make the push?
Well, once we have a bill number, obviously, the city's formal support of it would be helpful. And then once we see, obviously, the election's going to happen in November, the new counts, the new members get sworn in on December fifth, and we'll see the makeup of those new members. So for folks at home, you need two-thirds on an urgency bill. And the difference between a regular bill and an urgency bill, a regular bill goes into effect in January. An urgency bill goes into effect the moment the governor signs it. And so we had fifty-three votes. We needed one more for the urgency. For the, to pass it, we just needed forty-one. So as a simple majority bill, we'll, we'll have those votes. But we want it in law as soon as possible, because it's a reaction to the Supreme Court decision. And so that's why it's urgent. And so we'll be crunching the numbers. And obviously, any of the, if there's anybody squishy, I'll let you know, and we can go squish them. That's a technical term.
Squish. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, and thank you, ARDA. Thank you for all the heavy lifting you do. We appreciate her.
She's been working out a lot.
And I have to say, it's been a great partnership. Our, our pet thing we did, was that two years ago, we did the pet thing with Parks and Rec. I mean, that was a really fun thing we've done. And, you know, obviously, we're going to continue to do more. So thank you.
So now, we'll go down, all council members, let's go down and take a picture with the senator?
On behalf of the California State Legislature and the governor, presenting twenty-three million dollars for the Affordable Housing Joint贫民集団.
Fits in an ATM, right? And just one final thing. I got to go to the nine eleven memorial, too, and that was really poignant. And I had not looked at the guardian statue, you know, driven by it so many times. But that really is an impressive statue to our first responders. And so it was really nice to be there as a Burbank resident. So thank you for letting me come share, and Mr. Mayor. Everybody watch the mayor, so he doesn't leave with that check. Everybody have a great, safe night. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council and for the community. City Council convened closed session this afternoon at three thirty PM to meet on six items. One item of potential significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-six point nine E three. Five matters of existing litigation under Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-six point nine D one. The first case was Rosenfeld versus Burbank. Another case is Save Rancho Providencia Neighborhood versus City of Burbank, Pickwick Investment LLC versus City of Burbank, Yimby Law versus City of Burbank. And the final case is the California Department of Housing Community Development notices a violation relating to denial of the Pickwick SB thirty-five project.
Thank you, sir.
Council took no reportable action on these matters.
So now is the time for general public comment. For members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please present a completed yellow general public comment card to the city clerk. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business and or agenda item. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum allotted time of three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track on how much time is left. Please state your name for the record. For those wishing to call during the general public comment period, please call now at eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Got several cards here. Our first speaker is Kristi Malouf, followed by Ann Wenzel. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Kristi Malouf. I am one of the applicants to fill the vacancy for the Police Commission. I have lived in this city of Burbank for over twenty-five years, this great city I call home. I am currently retired after a forty-year career with the Los Angeles Police Department, retiring as a civilian supervisor. Burbank is a city with a growing population and is sought after by many to call home. My knowledge and experience will be an asset to the Police Commission in helping to provide civilian oversight to advocate best law enforcement policies and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Wenzel, followed by Tim Cherry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ann Wenzel, and I, too, have submitted an application for the vacancy on the Burbank Police Commission. My family and I have lived in Burbank for nearly twenty-seven years, and I have worked in education for almost twenty. I have always felt strongly about public service, and over the years, I've looked for opportunities to give back to the community. The summer, I attended and completed the Burbank Community Police Academy. Given everything I learned from that experience, I look at the chance to sit on the commission as a great next step in my public service journey. Here's where I stand on some of the key issues and how I feel I can contribute. Of course, a hot topic of our country is a push by some to defund the police. I do not support defunding or dismantling our police department, but I do support taking the opportunity to reimagine the role of our police and public safety. I support evaluating and redirecting law enforcement money to fund programs that provide mental health, substance abuse, and family services. I favor investment in community initiatives that support people's needs. For example, ongoing support promotion of the new National Mental Health Hotline, programs that engage our youth in pursuit of career opportunities, the in-person meet and greets, yes, the ice cream socials that encourage communication between citizens and police. We need to ensure the safety of our schools in the event of any emergency. But this does not require, in my opinion, a large on-campus police presence. Rather, it requires ongoing reality-based education of teachers, staff, students, and families in conjunction with the training of our police. I am a proponent of good government, which includes a strong and efficient police department. We need to regularly evaluate how we deploy our police. For example, we need to educate citizens that not every barking dog or loud party needs a call to nine one one. Make no mistake, I believe we need to ensure that our police department has the ability to fight and solve crime. We should always look at our process and our results in order to make public safety efforts smart, responsive, and in the best interest of the people who live in Burbank. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to your support.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tim Cherry, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tim Cherry. I submitted for, for the council's consideration at your meeting tonight, my application to the Burbank Water and Power Board. As a homeowner of the city of Burbank for the last twenty years, and a utility engineer in the public and private sectors, if appointed, I will bring a constructive and collaborative perspective to the board to address challenges to the provision of water and power services to the community. What are some of the challenges facing the city currently? On the electric side, complying with the state of California renewable portfolio standard, meeting the twenty forty-five net zero carbon goal, and supporting the increased demand from transportation electrification, all these items need to be delivered in a cost-effective manner while considering electric utility reliability, rate affordability, and environmental sustainability. Challenges on the water side include utilizing limited water resources more effectively. And I know we've been dealing with that for many years. And that's specifically since the metropolitan water districts, Colorado River Aqueduct, and the state water project have been dealing with drought conditions now for over two decades, if you look back. With the state water project deliveries this year at five percent of normal, and California's water allocation from the Colorado River expected to be reduced next year by two hundred thousand acre feet, innovative programs will be necessary to address this reduction in water availability. And lastly, as an integral part of the solution to these challenges, Burbank Water and Power should continue its outreach activities to its citizen owners and seek their input on how to address the complexities of delivering water and power and the challenges ahead, because there will be challenges ahead to meet all these needs. Thank you for your time this evening and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Donahue, followed by Daniel Livick.
Honorable Mayor Talamantez, Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmembers Prudus, Springer, and Schultz. My name is David Donahue, and I'm a resident and business owner, and I'm asking to be appointed to the open seat on the Police Commission. A little bit about myself. Years ago, as a much younger man, I was a very active volunteer in the city of El Cajon, where I lived and worked. I served on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, Boys and Girls Club, and the Crisis House, the Crisis House, whose mission was to respond immediately to stop the cycle of domestic violence, homelessness, human trafficking, and also connect families and individuals to the resources that help them to renew their lives. I also participated in the city's very first leadership program, Leadership El Cajon, which is very similar to Leadership Burbank. And this, and these types of organizations are very important, I feel, because they get the participants very familiar with the departments within the city, their procedures, and ways to engage in projects to benefit the community. My wife, Victoria Trigian, happens to be a participant in this year's Leadership Burbank. Even though I've been a resident for several years, it wasn't until recently that I began to become involved in what is happening here. And since I've volunteered, and since then, I've volunteered to serve on the Board of Directors with Vision Burbank, and was voted in as their vice president-elect. I want to specifically thank a few people that took their time to meet with me and discuss the importance of serving as a police commissioner: Police Chief Albanese, Councilmember Bob Prudus, Councilmember Sharon Springer, Councilman Nick Schultz, City Manager Justin Hess, City Clerk Zizet Mullins, Police Commissioner Romic Hagobian, former mayor and current president of the Burbank Police Foundation, Michael Hastings, and Viviana Garzon. I truly appreciate your insight for being upfront that this is a competitive group of candidates. The Police Commission is where I know I can continue to serve as a liaison, not only with the city council, but of its residents. I will pledge to support all efforts to fund the police department for any and all resources that will allow them to do their jobs more safely and ensure the public's protection. To advocate for an expansion of the mental health evaluation team, and from four days and eight hours a day to around the clock, twenty-four seven. To the men and women of our law enforcement department, not only do we expect you to do your very best, but we also, you should also expect the very best from your police commissioners. If I am appointed, that is what you'll get from me. I will show up and do the work. Thank you, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Levick, followed by Nikki Perez. Welcome.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Daniel Levick, and I'm a very new resident of Burbank, and I'm applying for the position on the Police Commission. I moved to Burbank when my wife and I purchased a home in October of twenty twenty. And I recently had us, my first, our first child, Eli, was born here, and he's a Burbank, now will be a Burbank native. So a little bit about myself. I am a graduate of Stanford University, and I have an MFA from Arizona State University. I've had a lifelong interest in law and policing that dates back to high school and college, where I was a participant in mock trial competitions, as well as a defendant, a representative for youth defendants in Santa Cruz County Peer Court. And that, for me, was a really formative experience, that learning the life stories of these defendants has really opened my eyes to the importance of a community-focused criminal justice system. And that's what I would represent on the Burbank Police Commission. To that end, I think that, I believe that the- To that end, I think that, I believe that there's a fundamental role of government in public safety, and that role has to focus on equality, justice, and the happiness of the people. And to me, the Burbank Police Department is a vital part of that system, and what I hope to do through oversight and guidance is to further direct it toward that ideal of equality, justice, and happiness for the people. So just a few of the specific things that I would want to focus on as a member of the Commission, and that would be to oppose militarism militarism in both police equipment and culture. I think that it's important in this time for the police not to act as occupying force, but to be an integral component of the community itself. And militarized equipment, training, and tactics that are employed by the police at times creates an us-versus-them mentality, and it degrades the trust between officers and the community. As a committee member, I would oppose police policies that foment any animosity between officers and community and promote a closer relationship between the two. And with that in mind as well, I would want to improve the perception, the public perception of the police. I think an integral part of law enforcement is that relationship between officers and the community, and I think that as in the past few years, a gulf has grown between these two entities, and that what I would want to see is a mending of this gulf. And I think it's a really ambitious goal, but I would hope is that through incremental and reasoned progress, that we could move towards that kind of significant reform and mend that gulf. And also, finally, I hope, oh, excuse me, I'm out of time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nikki Perez, followed by Simon Hamel.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontez and members of the Council. I'm Nikki Perez, and I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Board and share our support for the Civic Center project and the new central library. The Library Board has spent the past several years studying the limitations of the current central library that was built in 1963 and learning ideas and best practices of new libraries in our neighboring cities. Although library staff and our public work staff have done their very best, the age and infrastructure of the building can no longer meet community needs. Not only are we lacking study rooms and outdoor space in comparison to our neighboring cities and their state-of-the-art libraries, but there are also real structural issues. The plumbing and electrical systems are in constant need of repair, and the library does not meet current top ADA standards of our time, and it is not friendly to those with mobility issues or on motorized scooters. On top of this, a seismic assessment conducted in 2021 found that although not unsafe to use, it would require $4 million to bring the building up to the current seismic safety standards. Due to the age and amount of structural damage, the city has assessed that a simple renovation of the building is not feasible. Since it's time for a new library, we want to ensure that we have one that meets modern space, technology, and accessibility, along with service needs. Along with helping that, we want, along with that, we want to help expand sustainability, digital media, employment, assistance, and student success goals for our city. Finally, we would like to see a library that is part of a mixed-use development, helping our city do its part to meet its housing needs and to incentivize small businesses in a way that is affordable and well-maintained for our children and generations to come. I hope you can join us in supporting a new central library and the Civic Center development, and thank you for your time. I just want to say, I grew up during the development of the Buena Vista Library, and I hope to see a new one come together for our city, for our children. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you. Next speaker is Simon Hamel, followed by Francesca Ficetti.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. My name is Simon Hamel. I'm a thirteen-year resident, and I'd be excited for the chance to serve the city, filling the unexpired term on the planning board, if it is your pleasure tonight. The excellent schools, the neighborhoods with homes where people raised their families for decades, the balance and benefits of a community that appreciates the special and different nature of Burbank as a unique city among cities in a greater metropolitan area are all reasons that many of you, and certainly my family, chooses Burbank as our home. Our city is the result of careful planning and local direct governance by the people for over a hundred years. Many of you know that I hold rather strong opinions about the state control of Burbank. I want to explore options to keep our residents' rights, to have each of their voices heard and considered as to how they want to live in their own city, in the same way I am appreciative when others take my opinion into consideration. I seek the opportunity to explore in detail our ordinances and procedures. I look forward to discussion, debate, asking questions, and working with all the members of the Board and all of our professionals, professional staff, to find the middle ground between the small town of our past and the sustainable urbanization of our future that absolutely places residential quality of life as a premier value in Burbank. All too often, public discourse in our time leads to black-and-white positions such as the yimby-nimby name-calling surrounding people's housing choices and democratic representations. I wish to avoid these binary reactions and explore all the details of policy positions as to, as to their actual and factual results, and hear out people who, who hold different positions from my own. I find this is the best way to either be sure of my position or to learn and grow and reach a consensus we can all live with. As I, as I mentioned last time, I am aware that there are some people who probably don't agree with me on certain policy positions. I want to reiterate that I am a person who wants to and looks forward to working with people who hold positions other than my own and who come from different backgrounds of any sort. I hope that if you choose to appoint me, we can all see our way to keep an open mind and work together to make Burbank a place that all our children can take pride and ownership without regard to their economic history, no matter their background. I will remain in the chamber tonight throughout the appointment period in case any of you would like me to respond to any question on the record prior to the appointment. In any case, I would be honored to serve the city, and I hope that I can continue to express a view that keeps Burbank a place that families choose in the future. I also, since I have a little time left, I want to point out that with last night's planning board, I thought it was great that we have three existing long-term local businesses looking to expand in Burbank. Those were all three projects that were approved last night, and I also want to thank the mayor for coming to the opening of PAC 225. I saw you there. So thank you for coming, and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Francesca Ficetti, followed by Andre Dionysian.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm speaking on behalf of forty-three homes and approximately eighty residents in a four-story building located at 225 North Rose Street. Please help us protect our health, safety, lives, and homes. We urgently need your help to stop the parking lot expansion at 4301 West Riverside Drive, the old Mo's Restaurant, which is now from Mendocino Farms and Takaya. The current investment company is planning to expand the parking lot five feet, so vehicles are now parking less than five feet from the side of our building and directly up to our building on the back half of our property. They will need to excavate the area, tear down an existing block concrete wall used as a current buffer between our properties, and remove landscaped green space. This will lead to extensive environmental impacts to our community and lead to harmful and potential deadly results. Cars will be less than three feet from our building's main gas pipeline. Our homes and the structural integrity of our building could be damaged. Excavation directly up to the back half of our building, vehicles, trucks, so close to cause vibrations and shaking to our homes. Trucks and cars will be within feet of bedroom windows, vehicle exhaust fumes, people smoking from their cars, all filtering into homes. Councilmembers, we come to you in urgency to help protect the community. This should be immediately terminated. Conditional use permit from 1996 per municipal code 10-1-1951 should be terminated because it was not executed within 180 days of the granting of the permit. It had been abandoned or discontinued for six consecutive months. When Mo's closed in 2015, they did not have the tandem parking as noted in the permit. One of the conditions of the permit approval was that it had to comply by all requirements of Burbank Municipal Code. Code 10-1-1417.2, when parking lots are next to residential zones, ten feet shall be landscaped and continuously maintained to provide a buffer between the parking lot and adjacent residential properties. This expansion does not comply with the conditions of approval. Council, if this isn't terminated based off of the time lag from the granting of the permit from 1996, then we need to revoke this permit. The permit should be revoked per code 10-1-1952 on the following grounds. One, it misrepresents the scope of the project of restriping the parking lot and includes numerous false statements and misrepresentation of the facts. Two, it does not follow the conditions of approval that the applicant comply with all requirements of the municipal code. And three, it is detrimental to the public health and safety. We come to you with such urgency to help stop this as it's starting right now. Please help us protect the communities, the health, the safety, and the lives in our homes. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andre Dionysian, and that's the last card I have. Somebody wants to, who's here, wants to speak to the Council, submit a yellow card, please. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Dionysian. Getting closer. So I'm not running for everything, so everyone breathe easy. So some of you may have noticed me lurking in the back of council meetings for the last few weeks, and I just wanted to say, you know, I really appreciate that this is open to public. I know it's something we take for granted, but I wanted to say, I really appreciate it's open to the public, and I joked to my friends, this is the best lecture series I've ever seen. You learn quite a lot just sitting, listening to reports, listening to people's opinions. But I wanted to come up and talk about something that I don't think we pay enough attention to. Everybody knows it's important. I don't think anyone's going to disagree with it, but we need to really buckle down on this. Young people are chronically disengaged. Our generation, less so than the past, but it's such a marginal difference, and this is something that needs to be addressed. I run a nonprofit in Burbank that seeks to do that through our specific means. It's called Civic Duty Media. We run a bunch of projects to get people engaged in the community, young people specifically, but folks in general. And, you know, we can't do it alone. Nonprofits cannot do it alone. So I think, I'm not here to propose a specific idea. I just want to put it to the forefront of the public debate. I think it's something that just should be thought about. It's nonpartisan, it's, I don't think it should be political, but getting people involved in politics is crucial for our government to function on any level. And so I implore you to do or to, to think, to come up with new ideas and see what we can do to get young people involved. And to young people who likely are not watching, but to the one or two of you who are, this is on us as well. We need to get mobilized. We need to find, find that one thing that really speaks to you. It could be Republican, Democrat, Independent, unaffiliated, whatever, and find that one issue that really gets you up in the morning, tack onto it, and, and try to do something about it, even something very little. Go, you know, canvassing, door-to-door, something. We need to get involved. We need to get mobilized, we need to get registered, and we need to vote. Fifty percent of the country doesn't vote. Young people are a good chunk of that. That has to change. So yeah, I'm not here to shield for any specific political position. I just think young people should be voting more. So thank you very much for all the work you do, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I too agree. People should get engaged, but how do you do it? If you have a crystal ball, come to me first, and we can talk about the future. Anyone else wish to talk, speak to us? Okay, so we have completed in-person public comment. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and we're ready to go.
Please, bring them on.
Our first caller is Jay Geisenheimer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Jay Geisenheimer, a twenty-five-year Rancho resident. Firstly, I am asking you to delay the vote on appointing someone to the planning board. I believe the reason there are so few applicants is because many Burbankians did not realize there was another appointment, as this appointment is so close to the recent appointment of Michael Elrich to the planning board. I believe if you delay the appointment and reopen the application process, we will have more applicants. Secondly, I want to chat about 910 South Mariposa, the former Circle K boarding facility on Mariposa. I recently walked with four of you from base camp down Mariposa to see the lay of the land, and you all saw the sleepy, laid-back, slower-than-slow pace on this block. I like to call the block a cul-de-sac as it is three streets heading south to two streets. So it is a type of cul-de-sac. There is no through traffic in this cul-de-sac, so you either live here or you work at someone's house. There are over eighty single-family residents in this cul-de-sac, and yet there are two properties that are M1 zoning. They have a lane C with uses that do not need permission, such as an office building and even an auto shop. And yet, if you want to keep this property as an equine boarding facility, which it has been for over fifty years, then you need a conditional use permit. Does that make sense? A fifty-year-old boarding facility needs a CUP to change ownership, and yet an office building, car shop, and other types of businesses outside the style of this block have the right to be there based on M1 zoning? I am asking that you delete M1 zoning from the Rancho, especially right here in this cul-de-sac. It might not help us for this property, but it will help us down the road. Please consider removing M1 from the Rancho and keeping this area as the horsekeeping area it has been for decades. I just want to mention one little note, that as you all know, Matt Wake, and the owner of Pickwick, just sold three-point acres of Pickwick to, for $10,100,000. So he has plenty of money for the lawsuit. So I am wishing all of us good luck in our fight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next caller is Will Thompson.
Hello. My name is Will Thompson of Burbank, California, and I am here to support Charlotte Fisher for Planning Board Committee Member. I have worked with Charlotte in the past at Twentieth Century Fox. She has always ensured a positive environment for all of those around her. Listening to concerns of her employees and taking appropriate action was always her priority. With Charlotte's long history in Burbank, continued drive for ensuring her community is safe, and being well-informed about any planning information, I highly recommend her for Planning Board Committee Member. In addition, I would like to add, Charlotte fully supports Burbank residents for their personal rights, safety, and well-being. Having a humble presence at any committee meetings is key to success, and truthfulness to all that listen is what matters most. So I would like to conclude that Charlotte, being a longtime Burbank resident, humble participant at meetings, respected manager, friend, and honored member of the community, should be awarded Planning Board Committee Member. Thank you for your time, Will Thompson of Burbank.
The next caller is Evan Riordan.
Welcome.
Hello, how are you tonight? Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking everyone for their time and the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm calling in regarding the open seat on the planning board and to voice my opposition to the candidate, Mr. Simon Hamel. I've been a fairly active member of my community for some years now, and in that time, I have come to know Mr. Hamel as an instigator, a busybody, and a bully. In my opinion, Mr. Hamel's application for a seat on the Board is not rooted in a desire to improve the neighborhood, but a desire to wield a bigger stick with which he can rattle cages. In truth, I called tonight with reticence, as those who know Mr. Hamel can attest that he has a vindictive side and a long memory. People in the neighborhood walk on eggshells and fear that a perceived slight will result in frivolous litigation or a camera on their lawn during a slow news cycle. I have serious concerns about a future that would see Mr. Hamel afforded any greater discretion or efficacy than he has at current as a citizen. I'll only touch briefly on his qualifications, as the list was short to begin with. I too was I too was in the Scouts when I was a youth and have known many in my time, some good, but also some bad. They are from all walks of life. And while the Boy Scouts are an amazing organization, I do not consider Mr. Hamel to be a shining example of what they teach. Being a scout in and of itself does not qualify somebody to be a member of the planning committee. Again, I would like to take every, uh, thank everyone for their time tonight and their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is Paul McKenna.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I'm a council member and Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, first of all, please accept my apology for not attending this evening. Two weeks ago today, I had my knee replaced, and after my first in-hospital physical therapy today, I am icing to recover. I ask you, I am calling to ask for your support for the vacancy on the Police Commission. As an almost twenty-year commissioner in this city, I would like to improve the way that we communicate and work with each other. Having served on the Traffic and the Transportation Commissions, I have unique insight to the challenges that our Police Department faces. We must coordinate traffic challenges with our Police Department, our schools, and our other commissions, for the safety of our residents. The Police Commission should be an avenue of communication for our residents. I look forward to representing our community and our Police Commission to our community. I believe that the better communication, we can serve each other better. Thank you for your time.
The next caller is Kevin Muldoon.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Council, Kevin Muldoon. I'm calling to ask you to appoint Simon Hamel to the planning board. You know, Simon shares some of the same goals that the City Council shares. One of them is preserve the neighborhood from Sacramento, turning them from R-one into multifamily residence. I know the council has gone on record against turning R-one into multifamily zoning, and so does Simon. The council also opposes the state mandate of changes to our city planning. Mr. Hamel also agrees with the council not to change our planning for the state's own whim. Uh, the state is kinda telling you that they wanna do, in our city, what you have already planned to do without any input from us. You might say that the city is like, not in my backyard. Yes, the City Council is a bunch of nimby. So your vision and priorities for Burbank are the same shared with the next planning board member, Simon Hamel. I think some of the other callers have slandered Mr. Hamel and talked about an axe to grind just because Mr. Hamel stands up for having a vintage tree removed on his street, one of the palm trees that decorates Bel Air, and being very adamant about its removal is no reason to discount his, his passion for the planning commission on this city. He'll be a great addition to the planning board. He has all kinds of plans and visions for our community to keep our way of life and our simple neighborhoods intact, as opposed to letting Sacramento run, run roughshod over our community. Um, and one more thing, um, I'm gonna go on to water here. You know I've talked about water before. I'm totally against our civic center and our library. We need to put into the infrastructure of our water. Water is the main concern right now facing our community. With all the development and planning, we need to get on board and fast-track water reclamation and recycling into our city. So I appreciate your time. I hope you elect Simon Hamel to the planning board tonight. Have a very good evening.
Thank you.
The next caller is Janice Cox.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Um, I'm calling in support of Charlotte Fisher, Fisher, excuse me, for the Planning Board Committee. Um, I think she would be a great addition, and I do believe she is better than the opposing party. I believe, uh, it's only Simon Hamel who I believe is preventing people from building homes and doing what they please with their residents.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Robert Gregorian.
Welcome.
Hello. I'm calling to express my opposition to Mr. Hamel's potential appointment to the Planning Board Committee. In my opinion and personal interactions with him, I witnessed an aggressive demeanor, attempts to enforce the law based on his skewed perception of it, and threats of legal action. This would impede Burbank's development and will not produce the necessary housing that Burbank needs. He is simply anti-housing. My typical two-story residential home was constructed after a drawn-out permitting procedure that ensured we followed the rules. Nevertheless, he openly criticized the planning board's inefficiency beside almost every stage. During one planning board meeting, Planning Board Member, Mr. Atunian, and I quote, conveyed his disappointment came from the fact that the language used in describing your concerns were somewhat excessive, and to sum it up, they were blown out of proportion. He also says, quote, "And to read the verbiage such as fraud, negligent activity, dangerous building conditions where the building's not even built to belittle an entire department and an entire city, calling their professionalism and integrity into issue, I find that appalling. The threatened lawsuits and so forth and so on. Does not endear you, Mr. Hamel. And it is disturbing that this is the type of approach you've chosen to come to this body and present your case." During that same meeting, Planning Board Member Christopher Risati said, quote, "I'm just gonna be somewhat short and just say, yeah. I was really underwhelmed with the lack of true facts that were presented. I certainly was expecting much more. I spent a lot of hours reviewing this, and I really couldn't make sense of it after a while." End quote. There's also proof of him calling certain city actions undemocratic, which coupled with that proposition, has a tone of decisiveness and superiority. In my email to the municipal councilmembers, I supplied a lot of information on what is recorded. Nevertheless, his strategy is inappropriate for being in such a position, as shown by the data. I urge the city to kindly take another look at his candidacy, especially if it is motivated by a lack of applicants. I highly suggest that a pool of two applicants is not sufficient to find someone suitable for this position, and would kindly ask that in the future, and if possible in this situation, to reopen the position until a minimum number of candidates is acquired that would allow for a good selection. I thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next caller is Adolfo Godinez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Adolfo Godinez. I'm the city of, excuse me, resident of Henderson, Nevada, and I am a retired detective sergeant out of the LEPD in North Hollywood Division, which borders your city. Um, I'm calling to express my support for one of the candidates for Burbank Police Commissioner, Kristi Malouf. I have been a friend and colleague of Ms. Malouf for the last fifteen years, and I believe that she is uniquely qualified for the position due to her over fifty, forty years of service with the Los Angeles Police Department as a civilian supervisor. Um, additionally, she is a apartment owner in the city of Burbank and has resided there for over twenty-five years. Uh, Kristi, uh, work integrity ethic is beyond reproach. Her knowledge of, of working with the Police Department can be a very significant factor in assisting the Burbank Police Department in providing the proper oversight. And like we have talked before with her, uh, she is very much into giving back to the, the city that she calls home and ensuring that public safety is number one for the residents of your fine city. Um, I wish I could be there in person, but I do live a little bit far away, but anyway, I just wanted to express my support for her. She is well-known in the community, several members of, of your Police Department have worked with her in the past, and I think you would be, uh, very, very wise to appoint her to the, the Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, looks like we don't have anyone else, um, on hold, but, okay, I have confirmation, we don't have anyone else.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So there being no further public comment, I now declare that general public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response, brief response from City Council, uh, the City Manager and/or the City Attorney. Colleagues, any response? Did you wanna, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you to all of the, uh, commenters, both in person and, uh, appearing virtually today. Most of you spoke about agenda items, so I'll, uh, try to respond to your comments when we get to those. Um, Ms. Geisenheimer, I just wanted to mention, with regards to the, um, deletion of M-one zoning, um, the City Attorney and the City Manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but a few months back, I'd asked for an item about revisiting, uh, the Rancho master plan, and I think that that would be an opportune time to, uh, discuss that item, and I won't go any further, uh, given the Brown Act's limitations. Um, Mr. City Manager, I know we're also getting a lot of emails about this parking lot expansion. Did you, just wanna give the community a quick update? If there is anything?
Yeah. Um, if I could have Mr. Prescott, uh, provide, uh, information, he's gonna provide probably just, uh, a basic information, and then we could provide you a more detailed, um, email later this week, just because, uh, we are looking into it, and, uh, but here's an initial.
Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Talamontes, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. Um, the planning staff is investigating the issue. Uh, we're not a hundred percent certain just yet. Uh, we have a couple planners going out to make a site visit in the next several days, assess the situation. Uh, I unfortunately don't have a card, but I'll reach out to the resident who spoke this evening, and we'll exchange information and make sure that she's informed of what's going on, so.
Great.
One of the things, uh, we will report back this week and get you guys an email as far as the status.
Thank you. Anyone else, colleagues? No? Uh, Vice Mayor?
Uh, thanks to everyone, uh, for commenting. I, I always appreciate, uh, when folks come in or call to advocate for their, uh, appointments to, uh, boards and commissions and committees. It's an integral part of our, of our city, and, um, we rely on the expertise of those appointees to inform our decisions. Um, what I don't think is appropriate is calling to advocate against a candidate. I think, uh, that seems out of the norm for what we normally do here. If you like a candidate, you come down and you advocate for them or for yourself, uh, and then let the chips fall where they may, but, uh, just personally, I find it a little inappropriate to slander a candidate if you don't like them personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for sharing your views. Uh, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you, everybody, for coming down and speaking up, and for the callers.
Councilmember Fudos?
I wanna thank everybody for, uh, participating, calling in, being here in person, and, uh, it's gonna be tough picking a police commissioner. There's a lot of folks that applied for one position, but I wanna thank everybody for taking the time. Thank you.
Yeah, I too. I wanna thank everyone who came up and, uh, addressed us, and also the people that called in. Thank you very much. I know it's time-consuming from your normal working life, you know, if you're busy at home, and to take time to come down to the City Council and speak on either your behalf or somebody else's behalf, I appreciate that. So, once again, thank you very much for coming. And Councilmember Schultz has one more comment.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to say a special thanks to Mr. Dionzian. I've, I have noticed him at the last several meetings. I think it's great to see a young person taking such an active interest in local government, and I'd be happy to talk with you about how we can get more young people engaged. My nieces keep telling me I need to get on TikTok. They're like, oh, you can be so cool, Uncle Nick, to which I say, I'm really not cool, but I'm happy to try it if it works. So, uh, thanks for being here, sir.
TikTok, sounds interesting. Thank you, everybody. Uh, let's see, we'll move on to the consent calendar, maybe enacted one motion. Madam, well, the City Attorney have any responses to public comment? Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so then, consent calendar, maybe enacted one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar. Item number one is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of August ninth, the dark meeting of August sixteenth and August thirtieth, and September sixth, special closed session meeting for August twenty-second, and the joint meeting for August twenty-third. Item two, adoption of a resolution amending the City of Burbank Conflict of Interest Code. Item three, adoption of a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two Title VI Program Triennial Update for Burbank Buses for United States Department or of Transportation Federal Transit Administration Title VI Requirements to Guidelines of Federally Funded Subreceipients. And item four is establishment of biannual rate, rates and budget process for funds managed by Burbank Water and Power and the wastewater and refuse funds managed by Public Works and Burbank Water and Power. Item five, approval of amended and restated Joint Powers Agreement for Southern California Public Utilities Financing Authority, currently known as the Southern California Public Water Authority Joint Powers Agreement. And item number six, adoption of a resolution to authorize Burbank Water and Power to accept a grant award from United States Economic Development Administration in the amount of eighty-five thousand for the American Rescue Plan Act Economic Adjustment Assistant Technical Assistance Program. Item seven, approval of a professional service agreement with Guidepost Solution LLC for the development of policies, procedures, and technical requirements for physical security programs, and amending an adopted fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget by appropriating American Rescue Plan Act funds to the capital improvement projects. And those are all the items on the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't wanna pull it, but can we get a quick summary on number six? I get asked about this pretty much every week.
Absolutely, this is a good one. Um, is it Ria? Who's doing it? From BWP?
Madam City Clerk, could you repeat number six? What, what is that?
Sure. Adoption of a resolution to authorize Burbank Water and Power to accept a grant award from the United States Economic Development Administration in the amount of eighty-five thousand.
Thank you. I'm trying to figure out who's gonna come up here.
Thank you.
I almost thought I read the wrong item.
Didn't have the numbers memorized, so I apologize. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, this is an item to-
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry. I'm Daniel Lippert, I'm the telecommunications manager at Burbank Water and Power. So, uh, we included a, a item in the current fiscal year's budget to do a feasibility study for a community broadband, and we applied for and were awarded a grant from the Economic Development Agency to fund a portion of that study. And so tonight's, uh, item is to allow the general manager to accept that grant from the Economic Development Agency.
And, and what will that be looking into?
So it'll be looking into the feasibility of whether or not it would make sense for BWP to build out, uh, broadband to the entire community, as many members of council have probably been asked or, uh, contacted by residents to ask on their behalf. Uh, it's a common question. I get asked, uh, at least once a month by a resident why we can't do that, and the answer is complex, and it really does deserve a formal study, and so this item is to fund a portion of that study.
And, and just separate from this item, could you tell us quickly, what is ONE Burbank?
Of course. Uh, ONE Burbank is Burbank Water and Power's current program that provides fiber optic and broadband services to local businesses here in town.
It's commercial-only, and we get a lot of questions related to residential, so this will actually study the residential side.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I've been asking for this for the last ten years, like you said, you know, and finally it's becoming, hopefully, we can see some light at the end of the tunnel here.
We, we spend a lot of time looking for funds that can help support these items, and we were finally able to get some.
Because when I travel to Sacramento or DC, all these people, all these other colleagues from other cities that I speak to, some of them smaller than us have it, and I'm thinking, so why can't we get it in Burbank? What's so difficult about that? Now we got matching grant. Yes, perfect. Thank you. Continue. Um, yes, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also wanted a very brief report on item number four, uh, which deals with the establishment of biannual rate and budget process for the funds managed by Burbank Water and- of biannual rate and budget process for the funds managed by Burbank Water and Power, wastewater and refuse. Every year, we get folks that want to express their opinion about this, and I just wanted the public to be aware of the, the new model we're potentially moving to.
Let me remind my colleagues that once we start removing things from the agenda for a short report, and the short report becomes a little longer and on more questions, so our, our tradition has been, right, our policy has been to, if you want to pull something out, it comes to the end of the meeting. Am I right, Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely, and Mr. Lou will provide a very brief summary-
All right, thank you.
-to keep us on track.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members. I'm Bob Lou, CFO for Burbank Water and Power. And the agenda item before you is, our process has been, always been a one-year budget approval. We're proposing, actually brought forth by the council, well, this was a request by you, that we look into two-year budget process, and we believe that is doable. There are some hiccups, meaning the council by city charter has to approve a council each year, so what we're planning on is doing a two-year budget, a first year, and then what we call a budget like the next year, saying, "We've presented you the budget the first, the first year, and this budget will just make minor modifications as needed." And regarding the rate process, Prop 218 requires there is a rate hearing for budgets, but, I mean, for fees, however, it does allow for a pass-through based on the actual cost of water and inflation factor. So on that second year, we would not need a rate hearing. It would be just pass-through of costs that we incur.
Is that what the definition of a pass-through is? If you can explain that?
Yes, a pass-through is basically, we can have automatic rate adjustments as, if we pass-through certain costs, like the water cost would just be pass-through in the rates. So, we don't hear, we need a hearing, it'd just be whatever that amount is for the increase, it would be just built into the rate increase for next year.
Great. Anything else? Thank you very much. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, this just impacts the, our four utility funds, our four enterprise funds, the rest of the budget, the other 40 funds are not impacted.
All right. So we need a motion?
Yeah, a move that we approve the consent count.
Motion, a second. Madam City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports to council, we have four reports to council this evening. The first report is the appointment to fill one vacancy on the police commission and fill one vacancy on the Burbank Water and Power Board for unexpired terms. Madam City Clerk, please present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melissa DeCrimenji from my office is going to be presenting the report. Thank you. And be nice to her, it's her first report.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council, Melissa DeCrimenji, administrative analyst, City Clerk's Office. So tonight, I'm presenting you item number eight, appointment to fill one vacancy on the police commission and fill one vacancy on the Burbank Water and Power Board, both for unexpired terms. On July 19th, 2022, the City Clerk's Office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the police commission for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2025, created by the resignation of Africa Turner, who is no longer available to serve. Subsequently, on August 8th, 2022, the City Clerk's Office began advertising and accepting applications for an additional vacancy on the Burbank Water and Power Board for one unexpired term ending July 31st, 2026, created by the resignation of Robert Brody, who is also unavailable to turn, or to continue to serve. In order to obtain qualified candidates, a notice of unscheduled vacancy was advertised through the following: the city website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms overseen by the City Clerk's Office, press releases sent to the LA Times, Burbank Leader, and myburbank.com. Notice is posted on the City Hall bulletin board and sent to community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office for the police commission was Thursday, August 18th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. The City Clerk's Office received eight applications, Robert, from Robert Nielsen, Joshua Yakes, Paul McKenna Jr., Daniel Levick, Ann Wenzel, Kristi Malouf, David Donahue, and Christina Stradon. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office for the Burbank Water and Power Board was Wednesday, Wednesday, September 7th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. The City Clerk's Office received five applications, from Sam Miyamoto, Ashley Morris, Andrew Peak, Bruce Redman, and Timothy Cherry. The applications are listed and ordered received, and all applicants have met the City of Burbank's COVID-19 vaccination policy. Please note, the following applicant, Paul McKenna Jr., currently serves on the Transportation Commission. If appointed tonight, this will create a vacancy on the Transportation Commission. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions. We continue the vote.
Any questions? Councilmember Frutos?
Can you please repeat it again?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Oh, you silly you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Melissa will take the vote for you. Yes.
Okay, so at this time, we'll take the vote for Rob, for the police commission will be first. The first member we're voting on is Robert Nielsen, Joshua Yakes, Paul McKenna Jr., Daniel Levick, Ann Wenzel, Kristi Malouf, David Donahue, and Christina Stradon. So, it looks like Paul McKenna Jr. was appointed. So we'll be advertising for his vacancy on the transportation-
If my colleagues don't mind, we can just go ahead and appoint McKenna with a 5-0 vote. Mr. McKenna? Great, thank you.
And then at this time, we're going to take the vote for the Burbank Water and Power Board. So the first member we're voting on is Sam Miyamoto, Ashley Morris, Andrew Peak, Bruce Redman, and Timothy Cherry. So Timothy Cherry has been appointed to the Burbank Water and Power Board.
Okay, the second report, congratulations to the ones that were appointed. Like we, we say every time we go through these appointments, very difficult, a lot of good candidates, when you only get one vote, when there's 10 people that have applied, extremely difficult, but keep, keep going at it and take a look, there's openings throughout the course of the year. So just check the City Clerk's website, and if there's a vacancy in one of the boards or commissions that interests you, apply. So thank you once more. Yes.
I hear there's an opening on the Transportation Commission now.
There you go. Perfect. Good point. So let's see, the second report is the appointment to fill one vacancy on the planning board for an unexpired term. Councilmembers, after considering this item since it was discussed last month, we held it over because Councilmember Frutos wasn't here, and what we, I felt it was very important. Okay, Councilmember, that's right, you missed it, that's right. I felt it was very important that we all have to be present to make the appointment. So I'd like to make a suggestion to my colleagues, since the candidate pool has shrunk, and this is a really important board for our community, what do my colleagues think about extending this item for 30 days so we can possibly broaden the candidate pool? Colleagues?
I'm in, I'm in favor of that. I, I brought it up the last time, but I understand you wanted to wait for the full five council, but again, there's only two people. I really believe we need to have a little larger pool that we can really review for the planning board, and just extend it for another third or more days, and let's allow more community members to apply.
Vice Mayor?
Earlier, I mentioned that I did appreciate something that was happening with the public, that we don't do that here in Burbank. I think this also falls into that category. I think we, we set the rules, you apply, you put your name in, we pick the name from the hat. I think if we start to go down the path of, "Well, we don't like the candidates who've applied, let's extend it 30 days," I think it sets a dangerous precedent. We have two qualified candidates. I looked at their resume. There's no excess of schooling or education that we put on the planning board to say you have to meet certain qualifications. They've met the vaccination qualification, they met the residency requirement, they've done the application. I think we can make a choice from these two. I think there is a secondary issue here that certain members of the public find personal issue with one of the applicants. This is an unexpired term. I think we can pick from one of these two folks, and if they don't do the job up to snuff, we have an option that we have used before, where we can replace members on a board or commission if they're not doing the job well. But we set the rules up as you apply, we pick from the candidate pool, and if you don't do the job that we like, we can remove you. That's what we've done in the past. I don't think if we, I believe that if we start to change the rules simply because we're not satisfied, I, I think it shows a disservice to the people who put their applications on time, who followed the rules, who had their friends call in and support them, and what does that say to the two candidates? We're not, you know, in the previous two appointments, it's, "Oh, you lost out to somebody who was more qualified." But if we do it today, it's saying to the candidates remaining, "Oh, you're not qualified at all." I, I don't think that's appropriate.
All right, thank you very much for your point of view. Colleagues, any other comments? No, you know, you made a comment that it's because it's people we don't like. Nobody's mentioned anything about not liking an applicant. That's your perception, right?
That's fair.
So that's, that's not, let's not go there. Councilmember Frutos?
I want to join you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this up way before these comments came up, when you weren't here. I still strongly believe we need a stronger applicant pool to represent the diversity of our city, and if we only have two, we've done it in the past. The council, they serve at our pleasure. There's no rules except treating people fairly with respect, and if we don't get enough people, especially land use and development, I think we owe it to the diversity of the city to encourage all people to apply that are interested for the planning board position. This is, this is one of those positions that every two weeks, they're involved, so to only have two applicants and not really promote it, recruit, hey, and if these are the best right here, then it's going to stand out. But I'm not making a decision because of tonight's comments, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm making it objectively that only two people. It's summer, maybe they didn't know. I, I just think we should have a greater pool, and I'll let my other colleagues weigh in, see what their thoughts are. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree in part, Councilmember Frutos, you know, this is an incredibly important board, and it's important that we have qualified individuals who are going to be fair and impartial and objective, especially as they exercise a quasi-judicial function. Now, I would also say that it doesn't necessarily matter to me the number of applicants, it's the quality of the applicants. And when I looked at the requirements set forth in the Burbank Municipal Code and I reviewed their applications, I'll be candid, I don't know if either of the applicants that we have agree, view housing policy the same way that I do, but I cannot make the argument that they are unqualified. I, and for that reason, I cannot support the motion to unfairly, in my view, continue the subject matter and reopen it, so I will be voting no on a motion to reopen.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Springer?
I think we started with three and one dropped because they moved from town, and I've gotten concerns that the pool is too small, and residents have asked me if we would open it, and these two who have applied would still be applicants to it. So, and it's not saying anything about them, it's the, it's the pool.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion to see if it'll move forward. If not, I'm okay to move forward with the majority of the vote, but I'd like to make a motion to hold off on this vote, extend the application period for another 30 more days to advertise it and see if we get more applicants, and that's my motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Let me ask the city clerk real quick, is 30 days, is that a good time, or should be longer or shorter?
That's our typical time where we advertise, we're required to put it out for 30 days, so if we do, just did the math really quick, if we start advertising tomorrow, it'll be September 14th, we'll close on October 14th, and we can be back to council here by October 25th, and that would allow the 30 days that the council needs for re-advertising, and we'll do our part as we usually do to send it out to all organizations. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, any other comments? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
I just want to point out one last thing. We had two other boards and commissions voted on only a few weeks later on the application period, and we had plenty of applicants. It's entirely possible that we go another 30 days and it's the same two people. So, two folks who followed the rules, did everything required, and now suddenly we're changing it on them, I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Yeah, you stated that before. I appreciate, thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
No.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
No.
And Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, move on to the next report this evening, is a review of civic center project plans and establishment of a reserve account for the project. Ms. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes, members of council. If we could have the presentation out, please. I'm Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director, and tonight, I am very happy to be here with my colleagues to present preliminary conceptual plans for a new Burbank Civic Center. This presentation has been a long time coming. As you know, the city center, the city has been working toward a new central library and an updated civic center for several decades. Over the past few years, several key components have fallen into place to lead us where we are today. The work we'll present tonight has been the result of a strong team effort with participation from most city departments. The key participants in the effort are here tonight to respond to any questions you have, including our Directors of Community Development, Finance, Public Works, and our city attorney. In addition, we have worked with a team of consultants with numerous specialties related to the project, and a few representatives from our consultant team are here tonight as well. Our lead consultants are from the firm ERP, which also advised the City of Long Beach through their civic center development that involved a public-private partnership model for a new library, park, city hall, housing, and hotels. The consultant team has brought expertise to planning a project of this scope, to understanding the P3 model, to analyzing specific elements from real estate to cash flow to electrical needs, and generally to help bring these elements together into a feasible project. So tonight, we're going to talk about why Burbank needs a new civic center and central library, and why this project answers those needs. As the project has developed, it has turned into something with the potential to contribute positively to accomplishing most of city council's current goals, which we'll explain. Then we'll get to the exciting part, explaining the proposed project and its components, before diving into how we assessed feasibility and ended up where we are. We'll address some questions that have been raised to date, particularly in areas such as sustainability, housing, and potential considerations around historic buildings. And finally, we'll wrap up by talking about next steps and the overall project timeline. It's important to note that nothing has been designed yet. This is a conceptual plan that was developed to help staff assess how to make the project viable. We're not asking council to approve the project tonight, just to review the conceptual plan and provide input, and in order to help ensure work can continue, we are asking you to create a reserve account and transfer $10 million from the Fund 534 fund balance into it. This will support Burbank's ability to receive grant funding from the state of California for the project and potentially from other sources. There will be several opportunities in the coming year for additional city council and public input. The Civic Center project represents a transformative opportunity to meet city council goals and community needs while building a thriving downtown neighborhood in a sustainable and fiscally responsible way. No other municipal project Burbank has done in recent memory has had the potential to have this kind of impact on the community, shaping not just downtown Burbank, but the entire city. As we'll explain in detail later, the project includes a replacement central library, new open space, replacement office space for the Administrative Services Building, parking, and 475 affordable and workforce housing units, all in the area between city hall and the current central library. Bringing all of these elements together is what makes the project feasible, but also what makes it such a transformative opportunity for the- what makes it such a transformative opportunity for the city. So how did we get where we are today? We've covered this several times, so I'll go, just do a brief version here. Uh, starting back in 1989, we had a facilities master plan that identified the need for a more modern and expanded central library. And, um, that led to some minor renovations in the early 1990s. Um, in, jumping ahead a decade into 2003, there was a planned development for the civic center that was proposed to include many of the same elements we're considering today. And that same year, the community passed Measure L, that was a tax measure to fund library construction. Um, although that was passed, it was contingent on some state matching funds that back then we were unable to obtain. And over the successive years past 2003, there were a bunch of ideas bounced around for other funding and taxes, tactics to get this to happen, but prog- progress unfortunately stalled on numerous occasions. In the last few years, however, the project has gained new momentum. Key activities that made it possible to be where we are today include the passage of Measure P in 2018, with voters supporting an additional transaction and use tax, as well as an advisory measure to dedicate half of that revenue to infrastructure improvements. A study called a vision for a new Burbank Central Library was completed in 2021 and presented to the city council. That represented the first time in two decades that the city had developed a comprehensive vision and needs assessment for the library replacement itself, which included public input. And the downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan, launched in 2020 and currently underway, along with the 2021 to 29 housing element update of the general plan, are two plans that are key to creating the conditions that will allow the Civic Center project to bring all of its elements together in one space. I also want to note that since you received a presentation on the public-private partnership or P3 delivery model, um, that we're proposing to use on August 9th, we have presented a high-level overview of these plans to the Board of Library Trustees on August 10th and the Infrastructure Oversight Board on August 25th. As key advisory groups to the city council about various elements of this, we wanted to bring those members up to speed. The library board, as you've heard, um, are excited about the prospects for a new central library being part of this larger project, and the Infrastructure Oversight Board focused their discussion on the use of Fund 534, which we'll describe later, and was generally supportive. So as city council, you established seven goals in January 2022. These goals were based on your perceptions of the key needs and desires for this community. This project provides support for many of your stated priorities. City services, they're one of the key reasons people choose to live in Burbank. The city holds itself to a high standard and should have both quality buildings and buildings that can support those high standards of service. It's well-known that the current central library cannot meet what today's public demands of a library. The new library, along with the open space proposed as part of this project, will allow services to meet the moment and be flexible for the future. Another city council goal is quality of life. Especially since the pandemic, individuals and families are thinking more and more about where they want to live and what makes their life feel balanced and meaningful. Burbank has the potential to provide that quality of life by creating enriching locations that are sustainable, close to transit, and full of activities. The Civic Center project will enhance quality of life for the whole community and create new live-work-play opportunities for the downtown area. With the passage of Measure P and creation of the Infrastructure Oversight Board, Burbank made a new commitment to maintaining its infrastructure and planning well for the future, as evidenced by infrastructure being a city council goal this year. The P3 model proposed for the Civic Center project assists in meeting this goal. Not only are there multiple buildings currently in poor condition that would be slated to be rebuilt, but the model increases the likelihood that these buildings and space, spaces are maintained in order to support needs for generations. Housing and homelessness, an obvious council goal, being one of the greatest challenges facing municipalities across the country. In Burbank, we've come a long way toward meeting these challenges in recent years, but producing more housing is an absolutely key element that has to be part of the plan. This project not only adds almost 500 units to Burbank's housing stock, including 20% affordable, but it will allow the library to provide better support for homelessness prevention. Economic recovery and development, another goal, have been on the community's mind since the pandemic. This project will support area businesses, including the San Fernando Boulevard corridor, by bringing new residents and visitors to the area and providing opportunities to stay for a whole day of activities. The library's growing set of services for job seekers and entrepreneurs will also be supported by the new building. And then presenting here on a night not long after a heat wave and during a water emergency, it's easy to understand why sustainability is a city council priority. A full sustainability strategy for the Civic Center project will be developed this fall and winter, but certainly the new buildings and spaces will be constructed with sustainability in mind and will support educating the public about these issues as well. And I also want to note that I didn't list your seventh goal, traffic and transportation, but the Civic Center will be built adjacent to bus routes and with easy access to the MetroLink station. Core to resolving traffic issues is helping people use their cars less and providing housing near amenities and transit supports that goal. All right. So let's get to the exciting stuff. Uh, these are the project components. The library is planned to be 65,000 square feet, which is consistent with the city council direction from the vision study that was completed in 2021. The library is planned as two stories, and a third story on top will replace the office space currently in the administrative services building. A generous new amount of open space at 52,000 square feet will be as transformational as the library, given the lack of open space in the general downtown area. On the private side, the project proposes three residential buildings with a combined total of 475 new units, of which 20% will be affordable. There will be both public and private parking included, as well as a small amount of commercial space on the first floors of the residential buildings. I'm going to give you a couple views of the conceptual plan. To orient you, um, in this one, city hall is to the left and the current central library is to the right. On the center block, where CSB, ASP, ASB, and the old Wells Fargo, as well as surface parking are today, you can see the new library in orange with office space on top. The three yellow structures are residential, seven stories each, and about 150 units each. In this slide, you can see the scale a little bit better, um, with city hall in the lower left and then moving toward the current central library in the upper right, that becomes a U-shaped residential building. So let me explain in a bit more detail what was considered for each element. The library concept, as stated, is primarily based on the results from the previous vision study. It will support traditional and future needs, from the collection to an expanded Spark Digital Media Lab, and study and meeting spaces of various sizes. In this space, the library will be able to achieve the full potential of many of our current services and creatively respond to future needs for students, families, and individuals throughout the course of their lifetime. The open space will be as flexible and modular as the library, allowing for various uses at different times of day and different days of the week. Keeping in mind sustainability goals, it would feature drought-tolerant plantings, shade, and demonstration spaces. Its adjacency to the library allows for active programming created by the library, parks and rec, and economic development. The replacement office space for ASB is planned to be slightly smaller than the current ASB due to efficiencies we can realize by combining those buildings and sharing some conference and meeting rooms. The parking assumptions here are based on recent studies showing an excess of parking currently in the downtown area. The parking structure behind city hall that crosses Orange Grove would come down, um, that's to create the new residential building behind city hall. And the public parking moves, um, underneath the civic center block, so under where the library is, as well as the residential on that block. Basically, instead of using up valuable real estate with surface parking, the public parking can be underground and we can have new buildings as well as open space. While the proposed parking is not a one-to-one replacement for current parking, the amount of it is consistent with the city council's parking policy, which calls for parking management as a strategy to more fully utilize our parking throughout the downtown area. On the residential side, our consultants conducted an analysis of the mix of housing that would support Burbank's goals while also making the project financially feasible. A key element to the project is leasing the publicly owned lots shown here for privately developed housing for a period of approximately 65 years. Through this, the city not only supports development of 475 new units, but benefits from a new long-term unrestricted revenue stream. In the first few decades of this revenue stream, it will be used to offset the city's costs for construction, operations, and maintenance of the new buildings. Uh, based on the analysis, uh, the conceptual plan recommends a ratio of 80% workforce, Burbank workforce housing to 20% affordable housing. This is a ratio that allows a developer to access federal subsidies. And housing elements, I want to, uh, let you know, are based on the standards in the general plan housing element update, as well as the forthcoming downtown TOD-specific So we started this study knowing the city had a set of needs, a new library, replacement office space, new open space and housing. In order to understand the best way to support those needs, we worked with consultants to conduct a feasibility analysis looking at several angles. The estimated cost of the public components just described is about $116.7 million. Financing and constructing a $116 million project on our own would present challenges, but it opens up the possibility of using the P3 delivery model, which is generally applied to projects of $100 million or more. Along with the financial aspect, the feasibility analysis considered the balance of the public and private assets and how to make them support each other. Consultants considered fit to the existing downtown neighborhood and Burbank as a whole. The packaging of elements had to offer something of interest to attract quality development partners, which led to analysis of the P3 model's application in this case. And the project had to be analyzed in the context of our local planning efforts, like the downtown specific plan and state laws like the Surplus Land Act. As a result of this analysis, the staff team proposes to use a hybrid P3 model for the project, which means it includes both public assets and housing. Using the P3 model, the city can rely on a private development partner to obtain the financing. The city does not need to provide the money upfront, but after construction of the public assets is complete, will pay a milestone lump sum payment, followed by 30 years of annual payments to cover those capital expenses, ongoing operations and maintenance, and equity returns to the development partner. Annual payments would be beyond the city's means were it not for the establishment of Fund 534 after the passage of Measure P. This creates an ongoing revenue stream dedicated for infrastructure, a portion of which can be applied to this project. In a few minutes, we'll explain the use of Fund 534 in more detail. It was important to the project team to acknowledge the many demands on Fund 534. So the financial model for this project proposes to use about 25% of that revenue over the period of 30 years. This is possible to minimize the use of Fund 534 because that will be supplemented by these ground leases for the private development. As a bonus, the ground leases will go on several decades after we have paid off our project costs, and that provides the city a new long-term unrestricted revenue stream that may amount to hundreds of millions of dollars. The downtown specific plan is significant because it updates allowable land uses in the downtown area. The parcels currently slated for housing in the project do not have that zoning under the current general plan. However, they have all been identified in the forthcoming specific plan and the housing element update as opportunity sites for housing as required by the state of California. Alignment between the Civic Center project and the downtown plan will allow both to Now, about a month ago, we, you received a detailed primer on the P3 model from our consultant. We won't rehash all of that tonight, but I do want to point out a few specifics about how that would be applied here. The core benefits of the public-private partnership model to the city are, first, it transfers risk from the city. It, that, this includes construction-related risks, risks related to the long-term condition of the assets, and financial risks. The P3 model also optimizes costs by coordinating across the lifestyle of the asset from the earliest project stages all the way through operations. It creates incentives for the development partner to build and maintain the assets on schedule and to establish standards, ensuring the assets will remain in good condition over many decades. And it leverages public investment to initiate significant private development in the area, with revenue from the private development offsetting infrastructure costs and spurring additional private investment. As you learned last month, there are many different types of P3s. The primary one being considered here is called DBFOM, which stands for Design, Build, Finance, Operate, and Maintain. This means the city engages with a development partner who forms a consortium to bring others on board with expertise in various aspects of construction and operations. The contract with the development partner is complex and runs for multiple decades, something out of the norm for cities, especially of our size. Don't worry, we're not asking you to approve this contract tonight. We'll have lots more time to learn about it before we get there.
It's the third time you mention that.
Just trying to get you ready. But while it's a complex process to establish this contract, it does result in dividends over those decades, including confidence that the building will remain in a state of good repair when it's handed back to the city after 30 years of operation. Again, we're not going to get into all the details of that agreement tonight, but I do want to note that city staff and advisors will work in the city's interests to understand areas such as which aspects of operations and maintenance are best handled by the private partner and which should remain in city hands. Now, of course, merely saying the project is financially feasible does not explain to you how we propose to pay for it. So at this time, I'd like to invite our Financial Services Director, Ms. Becker, to go over the details from a financial perspective.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes and members of the city council. Uh, Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department. Well, of course, you know why I'm here this evening, uh, to answer that million dollar, or should I say multimillion dollar question. How much will this project cost and how does the city propose to pay for it? So based on the projection provided to us by our consultants, um, we can expect to send, spend about $2.8 million for the planning phase of this project, and then with total capital cost for the project estimated at around $116.7 million. Um, this includes all the components of the Civic Center project, including the library and ASB facilities, as well as the parking and the open space. Uh, it's important to note that these costs are in $2022, so we'll need to continually update our estimates as we move forward towards the construction phase of this project. So the payment would work somewhat similar to the way, uh, you might traditionally finance a project. Uh, there will be a milestone payment upfront that takes place at the beginning of around $34 million, and that sort of acts as like your down payment. Uh, then we'd have an annual ongoing payment of $7.8 million per year for 30 years, which would include both the financing component and the annual maintenance and lifecycle replacement of the facilities. Now, the difference between us doing a traditional financing and the P3 model, as I know this has been explained before, but is that the developer takes responsibility for doing the financing. So while we would report this, uh, as an obligation on the city's financial, we would not be reporting it as debt on the city's financials. And so it doesn't impact your debt capacity, uh, if we were to issue debt for future projects. So that's one of the big advantages of having the developer doing the financing on our behalf. So we went into the planning of this project with the idea that we wanted to avoid as much as possible any impact to the city's general fund, as we realized that the city has many pressing needs competing for those limited unrestricted dollars. Uh, fortunately, back in 2018, as Ms. Goldman mentioned, the voters of Burbank passed Measure P, which provides a steady and reliable source of funding to our municipal infrastructure fund, or Fund 534, that we were able to leverage for projects of this scale. So staff is proposing, uh, to fund the $34 million milestone payment through a combination of existing infrastructure fund balances, along with other restricted funds that could apply to this project, such as transportation, stormwater, art in public places, and development impact fees, and other restricted funds as we could, that we could identify as we go along. Uh, we'll continue to pursue the state library grant funding, along with seeking out any other grant dollars that could apply to this project. And to the extent we were able to obtain any of those free dollars, we would reduce the amount of the milestone payment that would come out of our other city funds. So that's the one-time component, but we also need to consider that 30-year ongoing obligation to cover the, uh, financing as well as the maintenance and lifecycle costs. So when factoring in what we felt the municipal infrastructure fund could reasonably afford in terms of annual payment, we looked at the current revenue and spending trends and landed on a maximum as, of 25% of total Fund 534 revenues, as Ms. Goldman mentioned earlier. Uh, this equates to around $5.5 million, assuming we're trending at about $21 million a year in total Fund 534 revenues each year, which is, uh, somewhat better than we projected when we initially, uh, approved Measure P. So a payment of this size of around 25% of the revenue would still allow us to continue with all of the regular maintenance and recurring capital projects that are currently budgeted within Fund 534, such as street paving, irrigation projects, park upgrades, and building maintenance. Uh, all of those items would still continue while also leaving some room for other one-time projects that could arise in the future. And like we discussed on the previous And like we discussed on the previous slide, we estimate that our annual payment obligation for this project would be about seven point eight million. But offsetting that would be the ground lease revenues from the housing, which are anticipated to reach about two million annually, once the housing components are fully built out. So netting out that annual payment of seven point eight million against the two million in revenue, we get a fiscal impact of five point eight million dollars a year to Fund 534, which is right around that twenty-five percent affordability goal. And again, this is done without touching any general fund dollars in the process. That's an important point I wanted to mention. Of course, both Fund 534 revenue and the ground lease revenue will continue to grow over the years, so over time, our annual costs as a portion of total revenue will continue to decline. Additionally, at the end of the thirty years, when the project has been fully paid off, the city will continue to receive that unrestricted revenue stream from the ground leases for the housing for another thirty-five years, which could amount to hundreds of millions of dollars over that period of time that could be utilized for infrastructure, or really any other purpose that the City Council would see fit. All right, I'll pass that back over to Ms. Goldman to finish this out.
All right, thank you. All right, so in some earlier presentations, the City Council, the Library Board, and the Infrastructure Board asked a number of questions about housing. Not all of those can certainly be answered at this time because the project is still conceptual and hasn't yet been designed, but we wanted to acknowledge those and respond as we can. Adding housing in general, as well as affordable housing specifically, is important for Burbank's future. As part of our consultant team for this project, we do have a housing expert from the firm BAE Urban Economics, who conducted analysis of housing options for us. Under this P3 model, we aim to add housing to meet Burbank's goal, while also putting the project elements together in a way that will attract development partners, which means they ultimately do have to be able to make some money. Based on these factors, the analysis showed that the ratio of eighty percent workforce housing to twenty percent affordable housing would be the way to go. This mix creates land value that the developers can use to pay the ground rent back to the city. It also enables developers to access federal tax subsidies for the housing that are based on a minimums of affordable housing. The overall density and quantity of housing is based on the baseline density assumed in the Downtown Transit-Oriented Development Specific Plan that's currently underway. Modeling for this project assumes the affordable housing is priced to be affordable for those making sixty percent of the area median income. And this percentage, again, is related to some of those requirements for federal tax credits. You'd previously asked some questions about whether the housing can be partially or entirely restricted or targeted to certain populations, whether there can be a higher proportion of affordable units. We can consider affordability differently, and some questions like that. As with all of the other elements of the plan, the proposed housing has been carefully considered so as to make the entire project balance out. Anything can be considered, but there's always going to be pros and cons to any direction that we want to go. The project proposes that the city and the developer enter a sixty-five-year lease for the land. At the end of that period, the city has the option of extending the lease under the same or adjusted terms, or the city could take ownership of the housing itself. That will not be something that needs to be determined, that can wait until toward the end of that initial, toward the end of that sixty-five-year lease period. What financing the developer obtains is also going to be an important factor on whether the housing ends up being for sale or for rent, and we would welcome your input on that subject. Ideas like restricting or prioritizing housing for certain populations, such as city employees or teachers, can be considered. They may add some complications related to the requirements of those federal tax programs, as well as fair housing laws, so it just all requires more analysis. We'll certainly take your input this evening if you want to request further analysis. Everything will have pros and cons, as I mentioned, when considered as part of the whole project. Some of the ideas would ultimately come down to local policy decisions to be made by the City Council, and they will need to be considered in the context of our other plans, including the Downtown Specific Plan and the Housing Element of the General Plan. Can I have the slides back up? Thank you. All right, so speaking of plans, the Civic Center is very important to have it aligned with a lot of other things that are going on right now, and staff from multiple departments have been working together to make sure that the Civic Center project falls in line with these efforts. One key planning effort is the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-nine update of the Housing Element to the General Plan. This plan analyzes the needs, constraints, and resources in developing housing over that time period. It identifies opportunity sites, that is spaces that could potentially be used for housing. And the sites proposed for housing in the Civic Center project have been identified under the Housing Element Update, which will be presented to Council for consideration tentatively at your next meeting. Within the General Plan, Burbank also develops specific plans to focus on certain areas of the city, such as downtown. The Community Development Department has been working through the process to develop the Downtown TOD-specific plan, which will be presented to City Council in twenty-twenty-three. That plan also identifies these relevant opportunity sites for housing, and significantly, it plans for changes in land use designation that will allow housing on parcels previously zoned for non-residential uses. Another recent change that affects the housing aspect of this project is the Surplus Land Act, a state law that went into effect in twenty-twenty. The SLA requires cities to offer any surplus land for affordable housing before using it for other purposes. Although the proposed plan here does not involve selling city land, the Surplus Land Act still applies, and work is continuing to ensure this project will comply with state requirements. While this law and its interpretation are still new, there are examples from other municipalities that support Burbank's ability to proceed as planned. And finally, this project will be aligned with City Council's parking policy, which identifies parking management as a means to make sure adequate parking is available, rather than building expensive new parking structures. Parking management ensures the best utilization of parking within the whole downtown area, including what will be the new Civic Center parking. As both the Civic Center and the Downtown Parking Management Plan proceed, staff will be sure to continue coordination and adjust as needed. All right, we're rounding the final corner now. This has been a huge amount of information to absorb, and it represents more than a year of work. We've noted a few areas that are still undergoing research and analysis, and wanted to provide an update on some work that will continue this fall and into the winter and spring. First, we will have some upcoming opportunities for public input. This public input will constitute the initial stages of developing a design for the library and open space. We aren't yet at the stage to think about things like exterior finishes, but in the coming months, we're going to seek public input on areas like where different sections of the library should be located relative to each other, and how the library should relate to the open space, based on how the community tells us they will use these spaces. This doesn't result in a fully-designed building, but it forms the basis for detailed requirements that we'll ask the developers to consider. The public will also have an opportunity to contribute their thoughts to a project sustainability strategy. They will include features like lead certification, solar panels, stormwater capture, recycled water, and native plants. The development of the sustainability strategy will identify how we propose to approach these areas and what is of primary importance. A little more behind the scenes, there will be some work ongoing related to some technical aspects. We've noted that we're working through ensuring our compliance with the Surplus Land Act. Additionally, the consultants have been working with BWP on electrical needs and Public Works on some sewer needs, and these will result in more concrete information in coming months. An architectural firm with expertise in historic preservation is reviewing considerations related to the placement of any new structures near City Hall, which is a nationally-registered historical building. And this study will also review the Central Library, which was built in nineteen-sixty-three, to identify any historical significance to its architecture that should be considered. Based on that information and the evolution of the project, we will plan to bring another update to you in spring twenty-twenty-three. We'll also, during this time, continue to work on identifying additional funding sources to offset the city's project costs. So the big question on everyone's mind is, when might we be able to enjoy this new Civic Center? If we're able to continue to proceed at the current pace, we can expect the new Central Library and open space to be ready for use around twenty-twenty-seven. Feels close if you're thinking about it for thirty years, right? Between now and then, there will be several more steps to work through, the process of identifying and contracting, just to get us through the process of identifying and contracting with the development partner. To get that aspect of the project started, this fall, our consultants will conduct an activity called a market sounding, which doesn't commit the city to anything, but helps get a sense of whether developers would be interested in a project of this nature. With City Council approval next spring, the formal procurement process would begin. This would first involve issuing a request for qualifications, or RFQ, to identify a shortlist of qualified potential partners. This RFQ process would run through about the middle of twenty-twenty-three. While developers are responding to that, staff will continue this work with all this input and analysis that's going to feed into the full Request for Proposals, or RFP document. At that RFP stage, the shortlisted applicants from the previous stage will review the city's detailed needs and requirements, and they'll have the opportunity to bring back their own ideas for how to meet these requirements. This is about a nine-month process, so it provides time for really comprehensive responses. That will take us into twenty-twenty-four, at which time the city would be looking to select a preferred partner for the project out of that RFP and enter into negotiations for a contract. This contract, as you'll recall, is the core document for the P3 partnership, stating exactly what the developer is committing to, for what cost, and on what timeline, including all of those operations and maintenance standards over the contractual period. As part of that process, the design plans, which we'll be working, we'll be gathering all this information for along the way, will get finalized. The design plans have to be finalized during the negotiations so the developers are clear on exactly what they're committing to, and can commit to that project price and schedule. So as part of that final stage of design, the public will once again in twenty-twenty-four have a chance to chime in and see how the project has developed and give some input. Upon City Council approval of the contract, the project will then move straight ahead into financing and construction, which will take a few years, given the multiple elements. So that will be about twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven, and then we'll invite you all for a grand opening. As noted earlier, the housing cannot be built all at once because some of it is slated to go on sites with current buildings, including the existing Central Library. So the housing adjacent to the new library would be completed first, around the same time as the new library, and then the other two residential buildings will come online two to three years after, so a total period of five to six years before all the residential is complete. And that's a relevant timeframe to keep in mind because over that time, that ground lease revenue is growing up to that two million total that we mentioned. Of course, we need to remember these dates are all very preliminary, but this will be an exciting opportunity over the next several years with lots of activity toward the transformative vision for this whole area of the Civic Center as part of a thriving downtown Burbank. The library and the open space really work hand-in-hand with housing to strengthen the neighborhood and Burbank as a whole. So to wrap up, I want to thank you for your attention to all of this information. Tonight, we're asking for your input and questions for future consideration, based on the proposal we've presented as a result of extensive analysis. In addition, to ensure availability of matching grant funds and to express council support for the project to move ahead, we ask for City Council tonight to establish a reserve account and transfer ten million dollars from the Fund 534 balance into that new reserve account. Thank you again, and the whole team is available to answer questions.
Ms. Goldman, excellent presentation, long overdue. Like I've mentioned to you and the city manager before, I was a member of the Mezural Committee. So that just goes to show you how old I am. But yeah, we weren't successful. Like you said, I mean, the residents of the community voted for the tax increase, so we were going to use that to go up to Sacramento and get matching funds. No, Burbank, you're too well off. You don't qualify for matching funds. Keep moving along. But anyway, we tried, and I can see some light at the end of the tunnel with this presentation tonight, even though it's going to be four or five years. But nonetheless, it's the first step, and you said it's already been a year in the making. So, yeah, it's going to be exciting when it gets completed. It's going to be amazing to see something that has been around for so long, talked about. The residents said, yes, let's do it, but now it's great. It's a great feeling. Colleagues, any comments? Vice Mayor?
Just a, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. So in theory, we're demolishing our, on the City Hall side of that, the dual parking, but are we keeping the one across the street? Is that, that's remaining there?
No, that structure would be completely demolished because structurally, you couldn't take that part of it.
So I could even saw it in half and keep one side?
Make it exciting when you're looking for a parking space. Basically, what ends up, there ends up being a temporarily unused parcel where the other footprint of that parking structure is. Part of the, there's some adjacent property that's privately owned and some that's city-owned right there, and, well, we're not including that in this current plan. We anticipate that there would be potential development, developers interested in gaining, putting those parcels together and using that for some additional development.
Okay, so this is not the end-all, be-all. There's more stuff happening. Okay, that's fine. I didn't mean to open a can of worms. Okay, cool.
Councilmembers, anyone?
Ms. Goldman, you talked about Measure P, Measure P money, correct? Is there anywhere maybe I missed it? But I'm just thinking back of what we told the voters that the IOB will be able to review. Is there in the report here a recommendation of IOB advising the council on priorities? That this is their top priority that we should be working on?
So we didn't ask the IOB for a formal recommendation when we presented last month, and that was mostly because we didn't present the comprehensive project to them. We wanted to bring it to the City Council first. So we just, this was just an opportunity to take it to that, the idea to that group for the first time, and kind of get a feel for their direction, which was positive. But certainly, if that's as part of the process, the City Council would like a formal recommendation, then once we're, we've moved a little further forward with some of the financial modeling, that can certainly be done.
Colleagues, the only reason why I bring this up is because it's Measure P money, and we told the voters that there was going to be an independent oversight to make recommendations to the council. I feel whatever action we do tonight, because it involves Measure P, that we're going against what we told the voters with such a big expense. I'd rather follow the process that the voters voted for Measure P, that there's an independent advisory board on spending Measure P money. And I really want to follow that procedure, unless there's like a timeline, but not to involve Measure P and get their advice to make sure that what we told the voters of an independent, outside-of-city-staff civilian oversight to make a recommendation that this is a good priority, I just want to be consistent of what the voters voted for. That's my only thoughts in this conversation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, your Public Works Director, Ken Berkman, just wanted to pop in to mention that, as Ms. Goldman said, we brought this to the IOB prior to bringing it to council to get their input and understanding of this P3 process and the potential for this specific project. Measure P and all the capital products that we do are considered by IOB on an annual basis. They're part of that process, starting from January and go through April, to bring the capital improvement budget on an annual basis to council. That would be the way that they oversee Measure P and oversee any Measure P expenditures on this project as well. So I wanted to make sure council and the public understood that facet.
But getting back to my question, did the IOB discuss this in great length? Is there any documentation that the IOB said, yes, this is important, we recommend this as an advice to the council, that yes, you need to support this, and here's the reasons why we debated it, and this is the priority? Because again, we told the public that they would be part of the advisory board to advise the council, that they independently reviewed it, they thought it, and they looked at all the different infrastructure and made an advice. And when I didn't see it in the report, I'm looking for it again. I don't know, we told the voters, and I feel that if we approve this expenditure tonight without first allowing the IOB...
Yeah, we're not approving that expenditure.
But it's ten million, so we're going to say, hey, tonight, you guys can take ten million and put it into a reserve account, which is Measure P money.
It's different funds, right? Different sources of the monies?
It is Fund 534, municipal infrastructure fund, so that doesn't...
How much money comes from Measure P?
A hundred, well, it's all combined.
Again, how much money's coming from Measure P? I need to know that. I need to know that because this is an important decision.
It is predominantly measure P revenues, but I just wanted to point out that we're not asking the City Council this evening to approve an expenditure.
Okay.
What we are asking...
Oh, I apologize. What we're asking is to set aside that $10 million into a reserve account. So what that basically does is it illustrates the city's commitment to providing matching funds should we be successful in receiving future grant funding. So it's a commitment, but we are not approving any expense at this time. In order to use the money that's set aside in that reserve, we would have to return to the City Council for an appropriation. So no expenses would come out of that. It's basically a symbolic, you know, putting aside money so that we can make that commitment to matching funds should we be successful with the grant.
And we'd come back to the IOB prior to coming to you before the expenditure.
Correct.
Just as we normally follow our process.
Oh, I'll let my other, maybe I'm off on a different tantrum. I want to listen to my colleagues, but...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, that, that is exactly the point I wanted to raise, and my question to staff was if we were to not earmark, I'm going to use the term earmark because I really think that's what it is. If we were to not earmark that money tonight, would that slow down or impede our ability to successfully go out there and secure those matching grant funds?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay. My question is, would it, would it make it harder to get matching grant funds if we don't tonight earmark that money?
Well, the dollars exist either way is what I'm trying to say. They don't go away by not earmarking them, but yes, it obviously shows the city's commitment to meeting the matching portion of the grant. The order, you know, is...
Right. It's not, it's not new money. But yes, of course, one of the challenges we have in seeking grant funding for this project is, of course, how long it has been discussed with the city not actually taking action. So the, as the city manager mentioned, it is, it is symbolic, but it's of importance, it's important that it's symbolic. It's stating that the City Council believes enough in this project to identify a new fund expressly for it. And yes, if things don't work out, you ultimately choose to use that money for other things, it can be pulled back out of the reserve account and returned to the Fund 534 balance. But it allows us to show commitment. Again, money won't be spent. It's just a commitment to the idea of this project that then we can take for grant applications for any other opportunities that we might be discussing with funders and say, and say we really, you know, we really have some endorsement of this project moving forward from our City Council.
You know, it's just like several years ago, the term used was shovel-ready, right? I mean, if your project is shovel-ready, then you're going to be moving in line to qualify for those grants. If you're not shovel-ready, thank you very much, come back again. But anyway, so, go ahead.
I wanted to ask the 534, 534 fund, how much of that is measure P money, or is it all measure P money?
So there's three streams of revenue in Fund 534. The predominant revenue is that 50% of the measure P, but matching to that, we also have that annual $4.7 million maintenance of effort that we contribute from the general fund to measure P, and that was part of what we approved with that advisory vote, that the city maintains its existing spending on infrastructure so that the measure P wouldn't supplant our, our prior spending. So, and then the remainder of the revenue is a little bit of interest that we earn on, on money that's in the fund.
How much is in the 534 fund right now?
Our estimated fund balance at the end of the year, and this are very rough numbers because we're still in the process of closing our books, is roughly around $15 million. So that's a fund balance.
Sure.
In addition to obviously the revenues and expenses, that's not included as part of the budget.
Right. So how much of that 15 million is measure P money? If you had to estimate?
If we were to break it out, I'd say approximately two-thirds, but when we're spending dollars, we don't say this is a measure P dollar and this is a general fund contribution dollar. They're, they're all together, but if you do it proportionally right, it's about...
Okay. So about 5 million of it is not measure P money. So would, Councilmember Fruos, would you feel comfortable if we made it 5 million, and that's non-measure P dollars, and then we can go back to IOB and ask them to look at this again and make it the full 10?
I would be more comfortable in following the process that we told the voters that they voted on, that we would listen to the recommendation of the independent body.
No, no, I understand that.
It's not really about, to me, it's about, I feel that we're skipping a process. That's, that's where I'm coming from. Staff is coming directly to us. We make a decision, the money goes in, we see the timeline, and I'm reading this, and I'm actually supportive. I, I, I want a new library, but to me, the transparency of the large amount of money we told the voters, that's where I'm coming from.
I absolutely agree with you.
And that's why, to me, I would, I, I cannot vote for this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, like...
Just let the IOB digest it because that's what, it's there. Let's see what their recommendation is. If, if they come back and say, yes, we reviewed it, we, we talked about it, this, this is the best use of the money to, to begin this, this partnership. But I just feel strongly that they're bypassing, and this is, when I was the mayor, as the liaison, there were conversations with staff that they felt that the IOB isn't really at the table discussing and advising the council on what the priorities, that's all I'm going, Vice Mayor?
No, no, I totally understand, and I absolutely agree with you. From my consideration, though, the measure, the IOB, the commitment we made to the voters was IOB looks at measure P dollars specifically.
And advises on infrastructure priorities.
Yeah, yeah, yes, and I understand that. I understand that. So they did act in advisory capacity here because they have seen this.
But there's no documentation in our staff report.
I mean, this has come before IOB, right?
Let me ask Ms. Goldman, yeah, I'm going to come back to you. You did make a presentation to the IOB.
Yes.
Obviously, it's, it's not a complete presentation because we're just starting.
Yes.
So what was the feedback or what were you looking for from them?
So we, again, we didn't ask for a formal recommendation because it really, the information was not complete enough for them to go there. Also, we felt strongly that this project is not just about Fund 534, and it should be presented to City Council as a whole first. So that was the decision to just take the high-level overview to both the Library Board and the Infrastructure Oversight Board. As a result, the, the staff report recommendation there was for the Infrastructure Oversight Board to discuss and provide input as opposed to take a specific vote. The discussion that evening was generally positive and supportive of the project and of the use of 25% ongoing of Fund 534 for the project. So we, it's not documented in the sense that they didn't take a vote, but there, there was a discussion, probably about half an hour discussion at that meeting about the project.
I would just ask that this gets recalendered for the transparency of this large expenditure. Let the IOB digest it and see what their recommendation is, and we're following what we've told them. Because the IOB, again, when I was a liaison, this conversation came up, that they felt that their input was after the fact. And this is, to me, is a good example of the transparency, the discussion, and what we, you know, what we voted them for is to give us advice. And until I can see a report, I want this to go through, but I don't want to shortcut the actual advisory board for transparency on this large account. And I appreciate staff, but objectively, as the final decision-maker, I feel that the component of the checks and balances on the advisory part is basically kind of, we're going around the mountain instead of, you know, really...
And you know, real quick, that's where the problem occurs. You're not asking us to, for a decision, but you're asking us to reserve some of the funding. Is there a time schedule? Do we have a timeline that we have to do with this sooner than later?
Well, we're currently under consideration for a $10 million grant through the California State Library's Building Forward Infrastructure Program. They are already in the process of starting to make some of those decisions. Should we get that grant, we are required to have a one-to-one match, and we would, as part of accepting that grant, City Council would have to demonstrate that that $10 million exists. So that could be coming up in the next few months, certainly.
Vice Mayor?
So, so here, here's, here's what we have in front of us for the IOB. There's two major jobs. They do a lot of stuff, but the two major jobs, one is advisory on infrastructure, and then two, specifically oversight on measure P dollars. Now, an overview presentation, 30 minutes where they were supportive of the plan, I feel that fulfills the requirement for advisory on infrastructure. So using the $5 million that's not measure P, I feel comfortable moving forward with that because I feel they did have some input. Now, if we want to talk about specifically measure P dollars, I think we should have to go back to the IOB to get a further, a, a, a full vote because that's kind of what we promised the voters. We did say independent oversight. So I would propose that we move forward with a $5 million grant or earmark, if we can do that, please, and let's get this in front of IOB as quick as possible to try to get the rest of the, of the five. That, that's my, my proposal.
Well, it's...
Councilmember Springer?
Thank you. It's not an expenditure, it's just in the reserve account.
No, it's a committed 10 million in order to get the matching grant, so those $10 million are gone.
But we might not get the, it's not gone. It's sitting there, and we might not get the grants, right? And so then the money just goes back. We have to get approval from IOB when we're ready, when we have the matching grants and we're ready to allocate it and spend it. Is that right? So it has to go back to them before we spend it.
All I'm saying, before it got to this level, IOB should have been part of the staff report, and I don't want to skew that. I don't want to set a precedence.
I, I wish they would have taken a vote.
I wanted something official.
If it was in front of them, I, I wish they would have at least...
It's a consensus type of, you say that the majority were saying yes, but there was no consensus vote or anything like that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Consent, informal votes is not really the city's process.
Right.
So leaving it out of the report is not, is being questioned.
Yeah, of course. And, and, you know, realistically, again, I don't think, I would, we would have felt comfortable asking them to vote without giving them this comprehensive presentation. So we were kind of, you know, stuck with...
You know, I'd like to, Mr. Berkman, could you come up and, since you're the liaison or the department head that oversees, what, what was, were you there that night?
I was.
And what was your take on that?
We provided informational meeting to go through the P3 process, most importantly, and highlight the fact that with the grant, we're looking to allocate through council to hold it in 10 million so we can be competitive with, like, hundreds upon hundreds of people who are applying for library infrastructure improvements. And yes, IOB is responsible for capital expenditures and infrastructure improvement expenditures, measure P and not, and, and other projects. They, they look at all of our priorities that all the departments submit, and we ultimately come to you with that list and all the expenditures that we're doing. They, it wasn't our intent to get a vote because it was a comprehensive report and update to council to say, this is what we're thinking about doing. We think it's a good thing to do. The P3 fits. Design build is a great opportunity. We have what we want to do and where we want to do it, and we can go out to the industry and get some really great teams to come in and say, this is what I can do for you and how I'll do it. And that was the whole point of that IOB meeting, and within it, it was, with your thoughts and approval, or at least lack of opposition, which certainly there was no opposition to this, we can also have council consider allocating this $10 million so we can be competitive and build this thing. So the, it wasn't our thought to have a formal vote because the formal vote by them comes in their meetings in February and March and potentially April if there's any conflict. And I absolutely know where Councilmember Fruos is coming from. They have expressed frustrations with not being part of priorities, but we did come back to them several times to help them prioritize on a category one, two, three of that, I'm not exact, but $600 million of unfunded needs that we have. So they have been productive. They have been doing that, and they do prioritize very thoroughly. We've been improving every year. It's only been three years. With their prioritization scores and their discussions, we're working with all the departments in a, in a better way to get more input and, and bring more value to the council every year and, well, to the IOB. So it was just a, a process that we thought we were on the right track, so we, we, we didn't formally say, do you approve of this $10 million allocation recommendation to council so we can be competitive for future library grants?
But again, because it's infrastructure, $10 million, the transparency of, of this decision that we told the voters, here's an oversight group that we're going to rely on to get their input, work with staff, here's our recommendation, something like this, to me, should have been so, right off the bat, let's discuss it with IOB, let's, you know, let's discuss it, here's a priority. Frankly, they could say, no, we've already started to receive emails of some people that want the library, and they think it's a great idea, but then there's other folks that say, wait a minute, we can spend the money somewhere else. We had one caller this evening. So we, as council, to me, to be totally transparent to everybody is to follow the rules, and the rule is, infrastructure board should have weighed on this and said, yes, council, this is, this right now is our priority. We've looked at all the other infrastructures. We strongly recommend, support staff's recommendation. Again, I want a new library. I want this project, but I'm not willing to do it, especially because it's measure P money, and that's what we told the voters. I'm sure we, staff can call a meeting with the IOB sooner than later to have a discussion with this, to make their, their recommendation, make their independent findings, and bring it up to the council. I don't want to miss those grants, but I, I, I don't feel comfortable in the public's perception that we are basically circumventing something that we told them in the ballot that we would do, and this involves measure P money. That's where I'm coming from. I'll let you guys finish the rest.
Let me run Councilmember Fruos' idea about bringing, bringing this information to the IOB for a vote. Are we ready to take it to the IOB for a vote?
What we would do is...
Is there enough information?
We would bring the same report back and make it a, a recommendation and not a receiving file.
Okay. I mean, could we put it on the fast track? I'm concerned about losing those $10 million that are available. We haven't gotten them yet, but they are available. And I know over my experience with these matching fund things, if you don't have the matching funds, you're not going to get it. I mean, bottom line, if you cut it by 5 million, you're only going to qualify for 5 million. You're not going to qualify for 10, and we're just, you know, behind the ballgame. So I would, if you and Ms. Goldman think it's doable to get the, the IOB back together for a formal presentation and a vote, let's do it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I did, I don't want to cut you off.
But you did. Go ahead.
Sorry, I've been, sorry, I've been waving my hand here, waiting my turn. So I, I, I just disagree with, I actually agree with Councilmember Springer on this. I just see it a different way, and I actually, we have a city attorney right here who we pay handsomely for, and I'd like his opinion. So, so here's the way I look at it. It's as if I have $100 in my checking account and I'm moving it to my savings account as a vacation fund. It's not using the money. It's not appropriating the money. But Mr. City Attorney, you're our legal advisor. You've read measure P. Am I, is my interpretation a fair one? I just don't see how it's, it's not an appropriation of the funds. It's essentially earmarking it, which is absolutely a legislative power that the council has, and measure P didn't change that, at least from my reading of measure P. But what's your thought, sir?
Well, the background materials for measure P included over $450 million worth of projects, as I recall. It's been a few years. I believe the Central Library was among them. So this was among the priorities that was part of the voter education process. So it's not like this wasn't part of measure P. To Councilmember Fruos' point, it's a question of prioritization. We have, the IOB is detailed both in the administrative, where we have boards and commissions in terms of their powers and duties, and it's also detailed in the finance provisions. It's up to you how you use them. Their process is an annual process where they provide you feedback on prioritization. I know you asked a different specific question, but generally speaking, in terms of the IOB, they have an annual review and recommendation process. They're not a red light, green light for you, but they could say, we have $50 million of these types of maintenance projects that we think are higher value, but the council may have a diminishing opportunity to capture matching funds and want to prioritize this library ahead of some of these other projects, and then the council ultimately has to decide how do we do it. But to Finance Director's point, these are the council's funds, and until they're actually encumbered, they can be... And until they're actually encumbered, they can be, uh, moved to one holding account and earmarked for a partic-, uh, particular purpose. Now, once we receive in a grant, we, we receive a grant and sign a grant agreement, we've now obligated ourselves. We've made a commitment to the state and the state has probably passed up other projects to make that commitment. Um, you know, you'd have to talk to our financial advisors, how much we get for twenty million dollars. We don't get a hundred and sixteen million for twenty necessarily. So, you know, whether we're shovel ready, what that timeline is, um, but it, until you commit to the state, until you sign a grant agreement, um, whether you're successful or not, you could always reprogram those funds. It's a holding account. Um, but how you use the IOB is, is up to the council. They've been established. They are performing their function, uh, with the Public Works Director as their primary staff member. Uh, they have had this project before them either on a list or, you know, with a detailed discussion more than once. Uh, and, you know, if the council wants more feedback, the council can request more feedback, more explicit feedback. But their primary role is annually, the capital improvement projects, including construction and renovation of major municipal facilities, is definitely on their list of responsibilities, as are the annual programmatic capital and, and maintenance funds. So, um, I, um, I didn't review that item, so I'm not sure exactly how much detail they went into. But whether it's annually or whether you want a specific report back from them, that's certainly within your purview.
Thank you. I only had one other follow-up. I think this goes back to Ms. Becker and Ms. Goldman. Uh, I, I may not get my way tonight, but let's just say hypothetically, the council were to earmark the ten million dollars in funds to approve, to sign off on the grant agreement. I mean, that would have to come back through IOB, through council. That decision, that commitment is not being made tonight, correct? Then I, I think we're spinning our tires. I think.
So in, so in talking to the city manager, the ten million is our commitment to show that the city council really wants this project and we've already committed ten million. And by taking an action tonight of the ten million, we're allowing the city manager through his staff to go ahead and execute it. So when that grant comes in, no? You told me we needed to show that we have the money already set aside for this project. Here's our commitment of ten million, which is part of the matching grant.
But we would need to come back if we got the grant to you to accept that.
So again, there's still an expenditure to be built. And all I'm asking, why staff didn't follow the procedure?
Can I? I'd like to offer a compromise and hopefully the city manager doesn't have a heart attack. Um, we have five million in five thirty-four fund that is not, that is not Measure P funds. And again, this is all fluid. Is it possible for us to earmark an additional five million from the general fund, calm down, until we can go back to IOB, get a vote, an advisory vote, if need be, on the simple presentation in the next couple of weeks, to approve using the remainder of the five thirty-four instead of general fund dollars? Because here's the thing, I agree that it is simply just an accounting issue. But this is a very specific set of dollars that we went to the voters for. It wasn't some ordinance that we created that we can sort of play around with. The voters voted on it. I think it'd be appropriate to say, okay, this money is hands off until we get a vote. Independent oversight, I believe all of that. So I think there's a way to do this. We can do some fancy accounting here to take funds from here and funds from here that isn't Measure P. We use whatever five thirty-four money, dollars is not Measure P. The rest we come from the general fund. We earmark in this fiscal budget right now. Go to IOB, get a vote, come back and amend it. I know it's a little bit more paperwork. It's a little bit more headache. But I think it's important for us to do the work, take the steps, to tell the voters, look, you voted on this. We're going to play it by the book. We're not going to do anything fancy or underhanded or backhanded or any of that stuff, even though I know we're not. Because I, I understand that it's, it's just accounting on a spreadsheet. But I, I, I think it, it makes a commitment to say, look, we're doing the due diligence. Let's get a preliminary advisory vote. I wish, I wish they would have just taken a vote. I don't see why they couldn't have. You know, I get it. It was a note and file and that's, it's nobody's fault. I mean, we just didn't think it was going to turn out this way. But let's go back on their next meeting. It's a quick presentation. They've already seen it. Get a quick yes, up, yes, no, up, down vote, come back to us. We fix this on the backend. And, and I think that, uh, moves everything forward today. We get the money going and then we, we, we fix it and post, as they say.
Yes, can we, um, do this tonight? Put the ten million dollar in the reserve and go to the IOB? And that way the money is there and we can get started on the, the grant process. And the money is there saying, look, um, we've got this money here. We're serious. And, um, we've done that. We've, we'll do it tonight. We're not spending the money. It's just sitting in a reserve account. Meanwhile, when does the IOB meet?
I believe it's the fourth Thursday of the month. Is that right?
Yeah, the, the next time they could consider this would be the, um, October twenty-seventh meeting.
Okay. That's, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Why October and not, why not September if it's the fourth?
Um, we already have the agenda and candidly, um, um, way short staff to handle more of the, uh, responsibilities here and get this into the agenda. But if it's.
Well, you've got the sense of the council. It's important.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, right?
Yeah, it's just the, the, um, we'll, we'll get it done if we have to get it done.
Yeah, just because, I mean, it's, it's, we can do it here tonight. We're not spending the money. It's there. And if, um, the IOB could take a look at it like next week or it's coming up, right?
Sooner the better.
Yeah, then.
My, my understanding, it's basically the same report. We just need a vote from them.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, same report.
So you want to make the motion, Councilmember Springer?
Sure, I move.
Go ahead. Sure.
So what happens if the IOB says, no, we don't feel that this ten million dollars is a priority? We have our suggestions and it goes against, uh?
Well, that's a very hard conversation. We're going to have to.
And then we've already applied, okay, but then we've already applied.
Well, we take that money back.
We're going to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, the IOB, as I indicated, is advisory. So it's not a veto. It's not a veto. So the council's still to choose among the priorities and the timeline of the priorities. So there are certain projects like annual maintenance, those decisions can be made annually. A project like this, uh, you can't turn a project like this around in a year or two years. You know, it, it, it takes half a decade. So, um, you know, it would be important if this is a priority project to allow staff to make progress as it can. But if you agree with IOB and IOB has a different decision, um, and the, the money can be reprogrammed quickly on many of the other priorities. Programs like the street program is an annual program that they make very quick progress on sidewalks. There aren't, and, and the rest of the team can correct me if I'm wrong. There isn't another project of this magnitude that takes this long to prepare that I think is on the slate right now. This is really the main one. So it's harder to restart this process than it is to back out and just reprogram the funds to one of the other annual type programs, if that's the recommendation of IOB and you agree with that.
But we'll cross that bridge if we get to it. Yeah.
I agree with Councilmember Springer.
Oh, okay. So I'll try to make a motion, okay? Um, so we reviewed the conceptual plans and now, um, we direct staff to establish a reserve account and transfer the ten million dollars from the Fund Five Thirty-four Fund balance for matching funds for project-related grants. It's just going to sit there. We're not going to touch it. It goes to the IOB in two weeks? One week?
Second.
Yeah. Oh, next week. So soon.
Yeah.
And the money's there. And if somebody wants to give us another ten million to grant us, that would be nice.
Well, we still have to compete. We still have to compete for it.
Right, right.
Hopefully, by doing this, though, it puts us in a better stead.
Right. It gets it there. And we can, and you can move forward. We can move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, if I could ask, ask a question to inform, uh, the vote on this motion and second. So have we, has the city applied for the grant?
Yes.
But it hasn't yet come to council, so we don't have delegated authority.
Correct.
So we have to come to council for approval of the agreement. There's two ways that grants come to you. They either come to you, you adopt a resolution, and sometimes you'll delegate authority to the city manager or a department head on their behalf to execute the agreement when it comes through. Or staff applies and then they bring the whole thing to you with the agreement bundled. So you haven't approved the application. You haven't approved the agreement. That will all come to you so they won't be able to obligate the funds. We, the city, won't be able to obligate the funds to the grant agreement until we, so there should be time, uh, to bring back both the IOB recommendation and progress of the grant application so that council knows the status of this.
Okay.
Is this grant from the state or federal government?
The current one we're under consideration for is from the state.
And you have two or three others lined up, I'm sure?
We don't have any others right now, but as the project becomes more definite, we are absolutely intending to look for grants for various aspects of it, outdoor space, some of the environmental elements, and, uh, and some of those may be state and some federal.
Great.
So do you second my motion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, since we're about to close the agenda item, I actually did have two quick observations because we were also to talk about conceptual design. So just for the sake of time, my, just as one member of council, the two bits of information I wanted to share is, in the rendering attachment one, when you're looking at designing the plaza, I really encourage you to keep it as green open space for the community. I mean, I, you know, I, because I know there, in, in talking with some of the board members, um, I know that, you know, there could be many designs, right? You could be talking about like a cement outdoor amphitheater. I don't know what the earlier discussions were, but keeping that green open space for the community, I, I think is the best use of it. And the other thing I would say with residential is I, I respect the calculation of eighty percent market rate. So that's probably two thousand dollars plus a month rent, you know, apartment. And, and, you know, twenty percent more affordable because that's how it'll pencil out. I just think we're sitting on a gold mine here in that we have high-value land and a rare opportunity to add probably more affordable units than we can otherwise condition in approving a project. So personally, when it comes back, I'd like to see options. I'd like to see how many affordable units we can extract out of that. That should be housing earmarked for our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers. And twenty percent respectfully just isn't very much. I think we could do better. But with that said, I look forward to seeing staff's options and the recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, I, I've said time and time again, twenty-five percent should be our minimum threshold. I've, I'm on record as saying that very often. So thank you for bringing that up.
Councilmember Springer?
And, um, please include for sale housing.
Yeah.
Well, that's what you brought, one of your questions, whether it can, for sale or rent?
Sure. I mean, all, all of these options, um, would just be part of further analysis that at our next presentation, we would let you know, we could consider twenty-five percent. Here would be the consequences of that. We could consider for sale. Um, here would be the, the consequences of that.
Because there are different, um, locations and, and maybe we could do sixty percent for sale.
And some of it, some of it does depend on the developer. One developer is doing all of it, so they're getting one stream of financing. But again, that's something that we can, we can do more detailed.
Mr. Mayor?
Right, so it pencils.
Also, if council's objective is for a greater number of affordable units, but the market data says there has to be a certain mix to make it pencil, council could also choose to go higher density in order to get greater affordability. Uh, and that could also benefit the balance sheet. So it, you're not necessarily stuck with that number, but CDD needs to know because the zoning for this project is part of the downtown specific plan. And so we just want to make sure that the plan matches the ambition for the project.
The, just to follow up on that, our downtown specific plan, that is our highest density in the city, correct?
Uh, eighty-three units per acre, eighty-seven units per acre is the highest density. Is this site currently being proposed for that many units? Mr. Ramirez is just going to come up.
Here we go. Now we're going to talk some housing.
He was falling asleep back there.
He heard units, units.
He was alert. He, he was already on his feet.
Uh, Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director and Planning, uh, eighty-seven units to the acre is what's allowed downtown. But it's not the highest density that we're looking at. There's other specific plans. So I think to the, uh, to Mr. McDougall's point is, I, I think at this point, a lot of it is visioning. And you have a concept in front of you. We can work that concept. Everything you've all noted are things that they'll be looking at, the consultants and staff. But to, uh, Mr. McDougall's point, if you are going to go above and beyond, when it does come back, we'll just need to know that because that has to be incorporated as part of the density and then also the development standards. But I think you're in good shape with the presentation. And we're here to support our colleagues and, and your goals and efforts. So I think that can be looked at in the future.
Uh, sorry, just to follow up, what is the current density being proposed on this?
Uh, right now it's eighty-seven units to the acre.
Oh, it is? Okay.
It is, that's what we're proposing, uh, but it has to come to you as part of the specific plan.
And then what's our highest density, Media District?
No, eighty-seven units to the acre currently is, but, uh, there's parts of the Golden State specific plan where that density may be increased near the, uh, MetroLink stations.
Ah, alright.
And it's possible that a fifty percent density bonus project could take you over a hundred units per acre.
Uh, yes, and there's a possibility that there are certain projects that may be coming before the council that have a higher density than that.
Hmm. So we currently have, um, like two thousand units either entitled or under construction and they're all rental. So if we could do sixty percent for sale, and I know it's got to pencil and it's, it's got to work, but, um.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a preview for the housing element that's coming before you. But we, we hear you, uh, Councilmember Springer, that, uh, for sale is a concept.
We can't force it on, um, the proposed, but we can do it here.
Yes, I think, uh, Councilmember Schultz brought that up. I, all I would say is, everything is possible at this juncture. We just need to kick the tires and check and see how it's going to work. Whether it's as the current model is set up or with even contributions from the city, right, to make that gap. So all, everything's on the table. I think what you have in front of you is a very good plan and we just need to work that plan. And it sounds like you're giving us direction to be able to do that.
Yeah. As long as somewhere in there, there's a library, right?
Ms. Goldman, um, under the open space, I really would like to see some type of, uh, like, uh, auditorium outside for like Shakespeare in the Park, Arts and Crafts. But don't do what we did at Johnny Carson Park. Build a cover, like a, a small, you know, Hollywood dome type or our Starlight Bowl. But I would like to see that so for the downtown area, people that are living there, uh, or people that don't want to be inside the library in a nice, cool afternoon can be outside. So that's really important for me is that, you know, outdoor to have different type of community events. You know, again, Shakespeare in the Park, Arts and Crafts, that is walkable and enjoyable for everybody.
Sure, certainly. I think the key principle for both the open space and the library is flexibility. So we want to be able, you know, different times of year, different times of day, different days of the week, still be able to maximize the use of that space. Um, and so there's lots of creative ideas that landscape architects can bring to the table for how to create opportunities for things like concerts and festivals and other events there. Um, but when those aren't going on, not to have a big dead space, that's part of the zone. So that's definitely under consideration. Thank you.
That's what I was going to share with you. Uh, all the traveling that I've done, not only in the states, but outside the states, when you walk through the park and you see some kind of space for Shakespeare in the Park, which is only done over one week, and then the rest of the year, you have homeless lying there, you know? And, and that's one of those things that I, I observed in myself and I go, this is, this is great for the one week or two weeks that they're having the, the festival, but then what about the rest of the year? You know, when you walk through there and it's just, it's a great idea, but I don't think it's very resourceful when it comes to the use of it. But, I mean, greater, anyway, um, so. We have enough direction? Are we coming?
We have a motion and a second, but no vote.
Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontas?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you know, you brought up the fact, there's, there's always been, for the many years that I've been around Burbank, there's been two reasons why people move into Burbank or stay in Burbank. City services, like you mentioned, and the school district, the schools for the kids. Those are the two main reasons that I've heard over the many years that I've been here. You can see my gray hair. Uh, and it's been, it's a great community. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, moving on to the agenda item number eleven. The final report this evening, the discussion of roles and duties of the Police Commission. Ms. Courtney Paget, Police Administrator in the Burbank Police Department, please present the report. Welcome. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Courtney Paget. I'm the Police Administrator with the Police Department. And I'm here tonight to provide counsel with a brief overview of the City of Burbank Police Commission. The Police Commission is established by the Burbank City Charter and is administered through the city's municipal code. There are five stated powers and duties for the Police Commission. To initiate studies and surveys in the general field of police science and law enforcement and report findings and recommendations to the council. To conduct hearings, investigations, or both at the request of the council regarding the need for additional legislation. To act in an advisory capacity to the council on police department policy. To receive complaints pertaining to the police department or law enforcement with the exclusion of complaints related to traffic engineering. And to examine books, papers, records, and accounts in the police department other than those pertaining to confidential matters under investigation. The city council or the city manager may also assign other powers and duties to the commission as deemed appropriate. The Police Commission consists of seven members who each serve four-year terms. Commission meetings are held monthly on the third Wednesday of the month at 6:00 P.M. The commission discusses a variety of topics related to the police department and law enforcement profession. Some of the topics discussed this year include California Senate Bill Two on police accountability, the department's transition to the national incident-based reporting system, and the department's bias-based policing training. The commission has also established an annual calendar of recurring agenda items that includes traffic safety, school safety, domestic violence, and mental health. Tonight's report was requested by Councilmember Schultz to provide the opportunity for council to discuss the role, duties, and responsibilities of the Police Commission prior to the joint meeting of the city council and the Police Commission that is scheduled on September 27th. This concludes the presentation. I am available to answer any questions that you may have. The Chair of the Police Commission, Mr. James Coombs, is also present this evening and can respond to any questions on behalf of the Police Commission.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Colleagues, who wants to start the discussion? Councilmember?
I appreciate the Chair being here and I appreciate Councilmember Elman sitting in the back and Captain Kremmons being in here and obviously, Ms. Paget, thank you. This agenda item really came up just for the council. And it's in preparation of our joint meeting. Both Councilmember Schultz and I, as the liaisons, felt that we needed your input in preparing for our meeting next week. And it's interesting that this article by the MyBurbank.com, it, it's the timing and the perception, the optics. And I, I, both Councilmen Schultz and I want our Police Commission to be extremely successful. We want the best for them. They've got some really talented people there. But when we received a C C email from the chief that some of the commissioners were basically going to captains and giving them direction and work productivity, the chief sent out, and again, because of Brown Act, we could not discuss this one-on-one because both... So don't be shocked for the first time, but we needed to have a public meeting to discuss this. They're not acting as one body. They're trying to find what they can do to contribute to make it a better police department, better service to our community. But the more Councilmember Schultz and I really talked about, we felt that the best thing to do was to bring this up and just say, hey, look, I think the time has come, and please step in and just jump right in, that we should give them direction. There was one meeting that a couple members called me after it because a member wanted to do ratings on each other to hold them accountable. And they spent about 90 minutes. And that really upset some of the members. And no names because they, they were just constructively saying, hey, there's nothing in any other border commission that an individual can require ratings. And the MyBurbank.com talks about how many presentations they get. But there's never outcome, like the next meeting, if we're going to make it a working meeting and let's review a certain policy and send it up the chain of command, meaning the council. Some commissioners have approached me that they feel that it's not their commission, that one member's controlling it with, with the chief, and they feel that their voices are silenced. But they don't want to rock the boat. Others feel that some members aren't doing the work out in the field and really engaging the community. So I didn't want to, well, both Councilmember Schultz and I, we didn't want this to be discussed in this great detail at a joint meeting. But just wanted to think together collaboratively, the five of us, really, what do we want our Police Commission to do? Do we want them to do ratings on each other? Do we, do we... Because when you talk to community residents, they're concerned that the Police Commission isn't really being effective as a body. You know, I listened to their reports and the hot topic is always... And now I'm going back to when I was a Police Commissioner. You know, we know the biggest issue right now is traffic. So if I was on, on the Police Commission as a Chair, like I was way back in my younger, darker hair days, I would have that as a standing agenda. Hey, within the last meeting, this meeting, what are our most problematic complaints from residents coming in? And, you know, have that discussion. How many citations were issued between the last Police Commission meeting to the present meeting? And what were the violations for? And what's, what are you going to do in the next? People want to hear that. They don't talk about that. And this is coming from residents that have approached me that are watching it on TV. And a lot of them were actually, were supportive of this report or this independent opinion. Not necessarily to get rid of the Police Commission, but they're just wondering, you know, any, anytime they do a staff report and the amount of resources that are spent. But there's never, hey, you know, we think we need to revisit this policy or we need to talk about domestic violence, you know? How is our domestic violence trending? So both Councilmen Schultz and I decided, you know what? We want to just present it to you. Hopefully between now and next week, when we ask the commission what they need from us, we can really support them by saying, hey, here's what's important to the majority of the council, hopefully all five of us. But I think the time has come for direction and hopefully supporting them and really saying, hey, this is your commission. We appointed you. You're independent of the Police Department. You're not there to play softball. You're there to be independent, be the liaison to the community, get involved with Kiwanis, you know, get involved with the F S A and really be the voice of the community. But it's really not going on. So that's it. I don't know, Councilmember Schultz, if I left something out or I need to restate something. Please.
No, no, I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Frudos. I agree with him. What I would just add to what he said is that, from my perspective, being fairly new myself, I think that we had a largely new commission that was really excited to get started. But there wasn't, as you know, our, our system is not really designed for a lot of back and forth. So I think that maybe where some things fell apart is the council didn't really have the opportunity to give the commission direction. These are the things we'd really like you to focus on. I know before my time on council, prior council had done that, especially in terms of national events. And then the commission reported back. But there weren't any sort of additional follow-up items to be further studied. I will say there is one, I think, positive development since we asked for this report. And that is attachment three to your staff report. The commission came together and put together a calendar for the upcoming year of topics that they would like to focus on each month, things related to the department. One thing I think would be a good place for us to start our conversation, and we do have the Chair here if anybody has questions about these topics. But I think that one natural starting point is, do we as a council feel that this list is inclusive of everything that we want them to look at? You know, are there things perhaps not on that list that we think they should be studying or looking at? And I think, again, the Chair could probably speak more to, to that. It is a flexible item. I would just close by saying I do agree with Councilmember Frudos. And I've shared this feedback with the commissioners who've come to me. I agree with you, sir, that I'd like to see a return of every month-to-month meeting, maybe more of a report to the community about the number of traffic citations for certain offenses. And I think in general, like most of our commissions, which are advisory, I think that if they think about each item in terms of one of two things, it's either informational, it's to apprise the community of what our police department is doing. Or, and I'd love to see more of this, I mean, maybe it's a good thing that we don't get more of it. It should be advising council about maybe an action that needs to be further taken, a policy that needs to be revisited, an ordinance that needs to be passed. And so I think that if they structure their thinking in that way, they're going to find that their time is very productive and valuable. So I guess that, that's all we have and we really wanted to turn it over to the three of you.
Because so far, real quick, in complimenting the commission, there's two great things they've done so far that I'm aware of that they've shared with me. One is when we were having that, those windows that got smashed down on Magnolia several months ago. One commissioner set up a merchants' meeting. He invited the both liaisons. And, you know, it was a good presentation. He brought some key folks to the table. That same commissioner, with all the speeding that's been happening, he's been researching and he did a presentation representing the Police Commission on, you know, traffic safety. But here's where they're split. They're not working as a unit and I think it's because there's no direction from the council. And all I'd like to leave before we return it, and I know Jess, when you were a commissioner and I was a commissioner and maybe the next council in the future can do what they used to do, is they used to have the mayor and the vice mayor at the beginning of the year meet with... First, it'd be the council. We would discuss, you know, it takes a little time, but, you know, we would discuss, what's our priorities for the Police Commission, water and power, et cetera, et cetera. And then because of the Brown Act, only the mayor, and I was there when Marsha Rommels and Anya Ranki met with us when I was on the Police Commission, would, would meet with all the Chair and Vice Chairs, who don't violate the Brown Act, and say, hey, the council discussed, and here's our, our goals that we have, at least one or two, so they can take ownership and come up with something else. But they need direction. They're great people on the commission. They want to do something, but I just feel that we need to give them direction. And with that, I've said enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
You know, that might be an excellent discussion topic to add to annual reorg. When we do the appointments to the different liaisons, we could do a quick overview of each of the boards and commissions and just do, how are we doing, give a quick update, anything new? And that way, we can say, oh, hey, there was a big accident. We need to prioritize traffic safety. Police Commission, get on it, kind of thing.
For every boarding commission?
I think, yeah, I think we can do quick. No, I mean, most of them, it's just same old, same old. I O B, keep doing I O B, you know? Water and power, we need more water. More water and more power. You know, I think it could be a quick for a lot of them, but there might be a border commission that has been impacted or there's a sea change in policy, like we saw happen with, with George Floyd, where we really changed what we wanted to see from our Police Commission, but we never took the time to tell the Police Commission. Like, we appointed a bunch of new people, we all talked amongst ourselves. We missed that part of, oh, let's reach out. So I think, I think we could do a quick discussion point during reorg every year and just say, hey, let's go through the boards of commissions real quick. Is there anything prioritize? One or two things on each? But, I mean, I think, you know, I have, for most of them, I don't think there's going to any, any change in priority. But it may help, it may help.
It is their priority.
Right, exactly. We...
I mean, so there might not be any change, but are we giving them?
We should at least list. Yeah, we should.
Some direction?
We should, we should.
So you have to address every boarding commission?
And I think it's, I, I think it's a good opportunity at that time. It doesn't have to be extensive, but we can go around and just say, hey, focus on this, focus on that. And then I think that would be a good addition to that whole process. Because we do the appointments, then we write down our notes, and then we move on. And we don't talk about it. So I, I think that's a great idea. As far as Police Commission goes specifically, I mean, there's a couple of stuff. I, I mean, personally, I would love it if they looked, reviewed our body camera policy. You know, Janaco came forward and said, hey, we should get a statement from the officer before they see the, the footage. And then we passed a policy that said, no, we'll get the statement after they see the footage. And I'd like to see Police Commission weigh in on why we went with one option when it was recommended by our independent people. The other option, like, that's a key component that I'd like to see them look at. Second, I mean, we had kind of a contentious debate about military surplus equipment. I would feel comfortable, the next time this comes up for a, you know, a budget approval, to get the Police Commission's way in on, okay, yeah, you, we do need all these. Or maybe, hey, we got to get rid of one or two of them. You know, I don't have the... I, I wouldn't want to go into it without their, their consent. So like, those are two major issues I think they could definitely tackle, have a meeting, a discussion. What is, I don't know, there's a whole bunch. But like, stuff like that, you know?
That was Councilmember Schultz and I, reason for bringing this, is to give you two weeks till our next meeting. So at the end, one of us or the mayor, hey, what can we do to support? And then hopefully you'll have an idea and then hopefully the majority of us will agree. Hey, yeah, let's, let's give them direction. And just two goals, because I still want them to take their own ownership. But we have to really give them direction in two weeks at the end of our joint meeting. Because they're good people, their heart's in the right place, they're smart, they're asking the right questions, but they're not coming together as one team. They're all splintered and it's not a competitive race. It is a Police Commission and you don't get rated. That's up to us when we're three appointment.
Yeah, that's weird, the rating thing.
There's no peer, peer assessment.
That's where the conversation started.
You know, and we do have professionals that are, have been in, in that world for many, many years, right? That are the captains, the chief. I mean, that can provide some information, not only information, but some direction to us and the commission. You know, what would be a good thing? You know, if you do some brainstorming, you know, at the staff meeting, I would think, what would be good for this new commission coming on board? We got new members, because we had several people leave us, now we have new members. How do we start with the Police Commission 101? You know, and then work our way through that. We've got a lot of great brains that, that are working for, you know, that are, that command staff. But we have to reach out, we have to reach out.
I have a question. Like, for example, October is pedestrian safety. So what would, what would you expect the product to be?
Well, because they're an advisory board, if I was the Chair of the Police Commission, the first thing I would do is say, hey, for pedestrian safety, and it's in October, give me the first six months of the year. How many citations were issued to drivers who failed to yield to pedestrians? How many accidents involved pedestrians? And what were the number one cause? This is stuff that the community wants to hear from their commission. Not that it's Donut Month, but they, you know, this is what they talk to me about. So that's what, I mean, anything related...
And in October, they could talk about the first month of school, because that's a whole different, you know?
And then that's what the community wants to hear. Hey, what's our, what's our, you know, traffic plan around our schools? This is stuff, because people are weighing in, but that's what's important. Because that's what I would do if I was the Chair. I would say, okay, pedestrian safety, or we're starting school in August. You know what? Let's get our traffic unit here. Let's find out what their traffic plan is, you know, how we're going to deal with it, with parents blocking driveways or, you know, what is a safe route, our valet parking. This is what we believe as partners, as liaisons, that the commission needs to be involved in. Because that's stuff that impacts people's lives and they want to know.
So then at some point, would the Police Commission maybe have a joint meeting with transportation? And say, okay, we have lots of pedestrian accidents or here at this intersection?
Here's where it gets confusing. Let's just, my humble difference of opinion is keep it within their... keep it within their department, in this case, within the police department, not transportation-
Right, I'm just thinking of the solution.
Because then it gets too convoluted. But the police commission could ask, hey, what is your standing plans? What are you guys doing? You know, how was it last year? How many, you know, children, you know, got hit by a car? Or how many, you know, vehicle versus Peds that the officers wrote tickets to? So they can at least have that. And what's our policy on the deployment? And look at that. And if it's something they disagree, they can discuss it, or write something to the council, and then we can discuss it. And maybe it's a policy change, or we can work through the city manager. These are, these are the key things that I really believe our police commission needs, has a direction from their five bosses, equally, we all have 20%, but I just would like to see a consensus next week, just want you to think about it. And what is, you know, just two ideas, and hopefully the majority, and, you know, they're good people on the commission, but I just think that, and Jess, you've been long enough now, that it's slowly starting to happen, like the other two commissions, where they're trying to invent everything, just to do what's right, and contribute, and be a true, you know, liaison, but they're just missing, they're not firing on eight cylinders.
Can I ask, who came up with this schedule? It's pretty good.
Commission.
Okay, because this is great. School safety in August, before school opens, pedestrian safety in October, after we get the numbers, DUI enforcement, right after New Year's Eve. Homeless engagement is the month after we do the homeless count. Yeah, no, this is, I think this is great. And that way, they have a standing thing, there's at least one presentation or review every meeting, and then the second or third agenda item on the calendar can be a specific policy, like some of the stuff that I mentioned, they tackle that. One of the things I'd love to see them see, look at, is the, the police department PIO policy, because they have an independent PIO, what is the stuff that they're doing, what is the stuff that they're saying?
This is all great stuff. This is exactly what Nick and I were talking about.
And then, at some point in the future, I don't know if they're ready yet, but, you know, to do all that training and stuff, you know, the article's pretty good about asking the commissioners to do ride-alongs, to take the training, safety courses, all that stuff. I think that's great. I think we should pay for any police commissioner to do those extra police training things. But at some point, once they're ready for it, I'd love to see our police commission tackle possibly any high-profile incidences, because under, as Ms. Paget was mentioning, under the duties listed in the city charter, number four and five, four is to receive complaints pertaining to the police department and law enforcement in general. So when we get specific complaints about police action in the city, you know, a lot of it comes to us directly, obviously, but there are some few high-profile instances of, of police involvement that the general public is much more involved in than the everyday stuff. That leads to number five, to examine books, papers, records, and accounts in the police department, other than confidential matters under investigation. Once an investigation is closed, after they've, you know, we've received enough complaints about a single high-profile issue, I think it would be under the police commission's purview to look at that, take it in, discuss it, look at best practices, what went right, what went wrong, do sort of, you know, a Monday morning quarterback, and really dive into any big issue that happened, you know, like, if they were, if they were in 2020, what I would hope for them to be in 2025, they would look at our handling of the George Floyd marches. Did we respond correctly, what was happening, did we deploy effectively, what was our outlook, you know, that kind of thing, to go back and re-review stuff. So I would love to give them that opportunity to do that. That's, I think, down the line, but there's a number of stuff that I think we can put on their docket. But, yeah, starting with, starting with a scheduled set of, hey, let's do reviews, let's do updates, I think that that is a great first step.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I'll be brief. The other thing I just wanted to add is that I think the commission, at times, initially, early on, felt like maybe they were rowing in different directions, because this calendar is a relatively recent development. Since then, I've seen a lot of cohesion with this group. At least they have a theme, something that they're talking about every night. Where I, where the distinction I would make is that I think they have a great game plan of how they're going to approach the year. But in that discussion, where there was the discussion of sort of self-rating how they're doing, came the discussion of goals, what should be the commission's goals. And I really think that direction has to come from, from council. And one thing that we can talk about, you know, in a couple weeks when we're all together, is in terms of the public safety, by the way, Vice Mayor, I agree with you, I think that offering advice on the use or acquisition of military equipment, great opportunity for the commission to exercise its advisory function and give their two cents. But in terms of public safety, what I'm hearing from our residents, and I'd love to hear if you have things to add, or if they're different, but I'm hearing three things. A lot of concern about property-related crimes and retail theft, I think that that should be a focus for the commission. It is up across Los Angeles County. Burbank's a relatively safe community, so we don't luckily see as much of the violent crime, but property crime, absolutely. I think catalytic converter theft is certainly up.
I got hit.
So that would be one. Sorry to hear that.
Where was the commission there?
So I think that would be one area for continued study. Number two would be firearms, but we're sort of, I mean, that is an area council is focusing on collectively. So I think that, you know, that might already sort of be within our purview. But the other thing is speeding, and, and street racing, and all the fatalities that are coming from that, and the injuries. And I think that, again, those two roles, those two problem areas that I'm hearing about, those should absolutely, in my view, be areas of focus for the commission. They can stick with the calendar and talk about all of these other things as they come up, I think that's great. But personally, I think those are two things they should be talking about all year long. And really with an eye towards, is there something that we can be doing better as a department, or on the city council level? I think that that would be a tremendous use of their time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just contribute, primarily to what Vice Mayor was saying, the city-
You found my catalytic converter?
Not about your catalytic converter. I think it's important, I mean, I, I agree that the vetting of community concerns and, and serving as a forum for public education on a lot of those issues and what's being done is important. But I just want to remind you, and this will also be at your joint meeting, is that the city has the Office of Independent Review. They expressly look at all of these sorts of incidents, sampling of some complaints, but they look at 100% of certain types of incidents. You get a report from that, the police provides a response, we provide a cover memo. It specifically looks at other practices and recommendations. Your qualifications for police commissioners does not zero in necessarily on the qualifications for people that are skilled in that kind of inquiry. And so, you're, you're, it's different than, say, City of Los Angeles Police Commission, or, or other ones where there's. So I just want to remind you that you are getting reports on that. You went through an RFP process to validate the organization that we're using for that kind of oversight, and you will get another report that covers two years at the joint meeting. So there, there's a difference, we kind of, with the community issues, but some of these issues are very targeted, and you'll, you get very targeted professional recommendations, and a response from the PD on these issues. So I wouldn't want to, we should keep the mission clear between OIR and what the police commission is doing. And they'll see that, too, because they'll be at the meeting here with council.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, and I know that, like, the LA Police Commission, their, their job is that independent investigation, all that stuff. I think, I think Janaco does a great job, I think we have our independent groups. From my point, I think it's just, you know, one or two high-profile instances a year that would, I think it's, it would be pertinent for them to take it on after the investigation is closed, to do sort of a, well, this is something that has really been in the minds of, of, like, you know, I mentioned the George Floyd marches, something like when we had the officer-involved shooting, you know, a few months back, something like that. It wouldn't be everything, it would be, okay, the community is still really talking and engaged on this one project, this one topic, sorry. We've got an independent review, we understand what happened, the council gets that, but there's no chance for a debate, there's no chance for the public to have input.
I would not necessarily encourage you to foster community debate on some of these issues, which have a high degree of liability, and there are very specific professional findings that are made. Many of these incidents involve DA and AG oversight, that's not something you want residents who apply online and show up here to be giving you opinions on whether they believe the city acted correctly or not. So to that point, we need to be very specific about what it is we're assigning, what the city's role is, and what the other oversight are. There are very specific judgments that are made about whether something's in policy or out of policy, and that's not something for a layperson who wants to serve in a community advisory capacity should be weighing in on behalf of the city. So-
Okay.
That's a very serious comment, and that's what OIR is for. But the more serious the incident, the more specific and particular our inquiry is, and in fact, the more other agencies oversee our, our own, you know, investigation. So, so there is, we can certainly have those discussions, but that's not something we would hand to a commission lightly-
Right.
-because they're, they're very involved matters.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Paget? When it comes to setting the agenda for the meetings, who, who sets the agenda?
The police commission.
The police commission?
They set the agenda, and we have, the police department will provide recommendations for topics that we think they may be interested in, or items that we want to share, but they are set by the police commission.
So they're set, like, for example, they're having a meeting tonight, we set the agenda for the next following months being-
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alex, any other direction? I mean, I guess, food for thought, there's a lot of food for thought that we've been throwing around, and it is a very important, you know, obviously, if we want to give direction to the police commission, but I think they, they have to evolve themselves as well. You know, they have to take it upon themselves to work as a team. It's hard, it's easy to say-
Yeah.
-but it's a lot harder to say, you guys should work, you and girls and guys should work as a team. It just doesn't happen. You know, if you haven't been brought up as a team player, for example, you know, I've seen a lot of people that never played sports. So when they come to together, they're not a team player, because they had, they don't know anything about that. I've always handled the decisions myself. I haven't, you know, I haven't depended on my team to work together. And I've seen them many, many times over the years. And you can just tell, that person never played any sports, you know, which is not bad, but anyway.
I shared my ball in the sandbox.
There you go, you were playing some sports.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To that point, and to the point that the other council members have referenced, specifically traffic safety, you have several boards and commissions that are grappling with the same issue, and they're not sure what their role is.
Right.
Councilmember Schultz?
If I may, I'd like to offer one council member's opinion. I really believe strongly that the police commission should be focused on enforcement measures from BPD. When we talk about reducing traffic fatalities and injuries, we talk about Vision Zero, don't worry, I'm not going to go there, I'm just saying, there are several components, right? There's roadway design, that would not be appropriate for the police commission to be talking about. But in terms of how is BPD strategically deploying its resources on problem roads, like a major arterial, Glen Oaks, which services Glendale and Burbank, right? That is within their purview. That's where I think they should be conducting a little oversight, having that conversation, getting the department to talk about publicly, what are we doing, what's working, you know, and getting some community input, too. Hey, you know, Buena Vista is also problematic, depending on the time of day. So I, in the conversation of, of traffic safety, I think when we're talking about enforcement, criminal or, and, and traffic enforcement measures, that should be housed solely within the police, police commission, because that really is their area of expertise.
This is all, it's policy review. They need to look at policy, they need to take a policy and examine it. Well, how is, how are we enforcing traffic on Glen Oaks? How are we enforcing traffic on the hillside?
Right.
You know, how are we dealing with a school site pedestrian, like, conversely, if you were to talk about Glen Oaks is a dangerous street, maybe we should look at narrowing it, that wouldn't be an appropriate conversation for them. Maybe that's more of an IOB conversation or Transportation Commission. But I think that maybe in our joint meeting, that's something we can convey more clearly to the police commission, although the chair is sitting right over there, that, that's our expectation, is that you're going to be the conduit to talk about enforcement. And I know, the other thing I would just add, too, is that with my, with my good friend here, we're also liaisons to sustainable Burbank, and the one thing I would say, in the context that's germane to this agenda item, is that they do a great job of making use of subcommittees and working groups, folks that have two or three commissioners who are working on this offline, reporting back to the body. I think that, it's not for us to tell them exactly how to do their job, but I think that that's another tool that they could, you know, really invest in. Hey, organized retail theft is up across LA County, what is the impact in Burbank? What could we be doing better to combat that? That could be the basis for a subcommittee or a working group. That's the kind of direction I'd like, personally, like to see the police commission go. And so far, from what I've heard, I've heard, you know, property, sort of, property slash retail theft is an area, traffic safety, specifically enforcement. And I like your idea about the use of military equipment. It comes, it's going to come up every year. I think it's great to have them talk about it, it's another opportunity for the public to hear in another venue, the equipment that we have, why we use it, why it's necessary, or if there are questions about those things. That's, I think those are three areas right there, to start with. And we never, when we did our body camera policy, I believe that we never had the police commission weigh in on that, if I'm correct. Yeah? So, there you go.
You know, the other thing that I like to bring up, and the command staff, from the chief down, has got to be very careful about communicating with the commissioners.
Yeah.
You know, if you provide information to one, you provide it to all. You know, that way, the rest of the commission doesn't feel left out, or, oh, he must be the chief's favorite, because they're always buddying up after the meeting, or before the meeting, and talking. Whether they're talking sports, or whatever, the perception is there, right? The optics. So I just would encourage, and I know the command staff is so experienced that it goes without saying, but I have to say it. So we have to be careful with that as well. If you share something, information with one commissioner, all commissioners get it.
And I would say, conversely, we need to really make sure that our commissioners are not giving policy direction-
Direction, yeah.
-to any, any officers on, at any rank and level. That is highly inappropriate.
Yeah, the chief sent out an email that all commissioners need to go through SHRI, but they're not to give work direction to the commanding officers, period. And you brought a great point, Mr. Mayor. One of the commissioners just said, hey, how come one commissioner has dinner with a certain member of the department, and we don't get that privilege? Or why is one member playing softball when we're supposed to be independent right now? We're not enjoying the commission to be on the softball team. We're the liaisons of the community. I mean, stuff like that is starting to fester, because they're, they're trying to do what's right, but this is what's kind of separating them. And, you're right. And, I mean, there was even a couple commissioners wanting to write a letter to the council regarding the, no, not, not the charter, but, you know, the, the incident that we had at the police station, that's a legal matter. They're not privileged to that. One commissioner read it in the paper, didn't bother to call the liaisons, just kind of took it upon themselves to, hey, we're going to write a letter to the council, we need to get involved. But they don't understand the big complexity, that this is a legal matter. We don't even know all the details, because this is, so, stuff like that, it's, it's, it's getting amongst the members, because a couple people talk to me different times on these situations, that they don't think it's fair, and they just want it to, okay, I don't want to beat them up, they're good people, they're doing a good job overall, but it was time that we needed to talk to the council. Just think about it, that our whole goal was just to communicate with our colleagues, this is what we've observed, but because of the Brown Act, this has to be agendized, it has to be, and we didn't want to discuss this jointly, and you guys say, hey, wait a minute, you guys should have told us ahead of time.
Right.
Just something to think- guys should have told us ahead of time. Just something to think about for our joint meeting. They're good people. They're doing what's right. We just need to give them direction. And they need to understand, you know, they're independent of the department, they work for us, they've got two liaisons to talk about situations, and we can give them advice or bring it to the whole council like we did tonight. But it's important for the whole commission to be one unit and all know everything.
You know, I've felt over the years that all boards and commissions need to be reminded that their advisory role, that they're advisory to the council. Because I've seen some, sometimes some boards and commissions forget that. And now they want to start making policy, and like you said, they want to start giving direction to the captain on the PD. No, that doesn't happen. It shouldn't happen. And as mayor, I would like to have known about that situation. I know the liaisons are there, but we appoint the boards and commissions. If something like that is happening, I'd like to talk to the chief about it. We can't have that. And then if it really gets bad, I'll go talk to whoever the individual is, because they work for us.
Yep. Trust me, both, we wanted to tell you, but I said, oh, wait, wait, wait. The good legal scholar is going to spank me, because now we're violating the Brown Act. This has to be agendized to discuss. That's the only reason why, Mr. Mayor. That's the only reason why.
And I would say, you know, they're new. Let's give them a pass. We talked about it, you know, they know better, they can do better. And just real quick, under Section B. 5, they're not allowed to examine anything that's confidential or under investigation. So they need to, you know, review some of this stuff and...
Or maybe it's not their, for their review, maybe it should be brought upon them by our city representative, the city attorney's office.
Well, if this is happening outside the meeting, I mean, Joe's not following them home.
This conversation that I was told happened outside of a meeting.
Yeah.
And luckily, it kind of dissolved itself. But again, I wish that those individuals would have contacted me or contacted my colleague to say, hey, this is a personnel matter.
Some issues never dissolve themselves. They fester.
They fester. All right, they fester. But bottom line is, I wish they would have picked up the phone and notified us that, hey, this is what's going on. Why am I reading it in the newspaper? Then we could explain, hey, this is a legal matter. This is a sensitive issue that not even the council knows about it.
Joe, we need you to go to every commissioner's door and see if they're reading the newspaper and tell them what's what.
All right. Any other?
Very quickly, Ms. Paget, just one question for you. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no requirement, no standing rule, that commissioners have to go on ride-alongs, right, like quarterly or yearly? It's sort of just voluntary if they want to?
Yes, voluntary. There is no requirement, but they're welcome to do it at any time.
I think it might be worth a conversation in the future, either a requirement or at least a strong suggestion from council. They got to get out there at least a couple times a year. It's a commission that really does require a subject matter expertise. I think it's great that we have people without law enforcement background on the commission in a civilian role, but I do think there should be an expectation, they're going to go out there, ride along with the rank and file, and just really learn what it's like to be in those situations as best they can.
Yeah. And is there, just a side note to that, is there some sort of, like, training? We can offer some schooling, class they can take? I mean, what's the...
They have NA cole, which is a civilian oversight, and I was kind of disappointed only one member out of seven went. Do you know that they can even get a certification? Because I was attending NA cole, that if you attend three consecutive meetings, then you write a paper on some type of law enforcement issue, you can get a certificate that's acknowledged of literally being a police commissioner and being able to facilitate dialogue. But only one member is right now in Texas. None of the commissioners wanted to go. But we, the council, going back to several years, we budgeted through their training.
So we pay for it?
Yeah. So it's there, but to have only one member go, I kind of like, well, everybody's got different things, but I wish I would have seen more, you know, at least two other members joining, because that's important.
Right.
It's the networking. I mean, networking with other commissioners from around the country, because that comes up once a year. It's an annual conference. All right, so.
Okay. You'll file, I guess? I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and council, I mean, council member. Police Commissioner Elman and Captain and Ms. Paget, thank you for being here for this discussion.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. Is it time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments? Colleagues, councilmember Schultz?
Okay. Going back to Wednesday, August the 10th, I attended the monthly Board of Library Trustees meeting. Nothing to report out, because they were preparing for tonight's meeting. August the 11th, I attended the review of the Burbank Fire Department Proposed Service and Organizational Enhancements. On Sunday, August the 14th, I joined Mr. Mayor on the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for David L. McBride. On Monday, August 22nd, I attended the Audit Committee meeting for the city. On Tuesday, the 30th, I attended the blessing and celebration of the new ER at Providence St. Joseph Medical Center. On Wednesday, the 7th, I attended Los Angeles County Civil Brand Commission for Institutional Inspections. And then I attended, on Monday, September the 12th, a ribbon cutting and grand opening of Urbain Cafe. And then I wasn't here at the last meeting. I wasn't playing hooky. I didn't have COVID this time. But from August the 23rd through the 27th, I was invited by the United States Navy to attend the Naval Station Great Lakes in Illinois. The quarterdeck of the Navy, I attended a boot camp graduation. And some of the highlights that I attended is I learned about the Surface Combat Systems Training, Surface Warfare Engineering School, Navy Medical Training readiness, and the importance of, there's a lot of women in the Navy now. There was a lot of lady recruits, and it's really a great opportunity for a young man, a young woman from high school or college. Literally, it's not the same Navy that we used to think about when we were younger kids getting out of high school. Today's Navy is really high-tech, and it's a great resource, and I'll be glad to share it with the community, whoever wants to learn a little bit about, more about what I learned about the Navy. And that is it, because I can see the city attorney saying, it's not the agenda, Bob, you can't discuss it.
So you're becoming a recruiter. I'm in the Navy.
Hey, in the Navy.
Colleagues, anyone else? No? Oh, councilmember Springer?
Yes, I attended the Chamber What's Brewing, I zoomed the Advisory Council on Disabilities meeting, and the blessing and celebration of the new ER was a moving ceremony with Walter and Bonnie telling their story. I attended the tribute flag ceremony, and that was very nice, and also moving 21 years after 9/11. And last night, I zoomed the P flag meeting. That's it.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't repeat anything my colleagues have already mentioned. On Thursday, September 1st, I attended the SCAG Community Economic and Human Development Committee meeting. Nothing to report there. There was, later in the day, a very interesting webinar about the bill package that's waiting on the governor's desk and the Cal Cities' position on those. I forwarded that to the city manager. Saturday, I was with you, Mr. Mayor, and with Ms. Garzone at Costa Rican Day for the ribbon cutting, which I thought was really terrific and a good turnout. Last week, Wednesday and Thursday, I was also at the Cal Cities' Annual Conference, and I just wanted to share that there were some great seminars there. I took one about guaranteed basic income as a pilot program that's been done in other communities. There was an interesting seminar on Proposition 47 and potential legislative reforms to Prop 47. There, this is relevant to the council. We took a position on the Our Neighborhood Voices ballot measure, which has since moved to 2024. Cal Cities has referred it to some of their policy committees for further workup, but the goal is for Cal Cities ultimately to take a position of support and move that measure forward. So I'm on one of those policy committees, and I will let you know the progress as it moves forward. Wednesday, I actually came back from Long Beach and joined Councilmember Springer for the virtual art exhibit opening night. You can go down to the AMC Walkway, and you can see a virtual art exhibit using your smartphone. It is pretty fascinating stuff. That's everything, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. So all of last week, I was in Brussels. It was real fun. Belgium is such a lovely place. But I went to talk to European Parliament on the state of the gig economy, the people who just work on apps and stuff. And, you know, for years, I was an Uber and Lyft driver, and they wanted to hear from people from all over the world, and people from Argentina, people from France, Australia, China. It was incredible. It was incredible to see. And it was, it was interesting being one of the few people who actually spoke English in the room. So that was, that was nice, to see that there was this great wide world out there. So that was very fun. And then I went to the 9/11 tribute, very jet-lagged, but made it. Brought my son. He was not jet-lagged, yet he still was very sleepy. We got up early for that one. And then, lastly, I just want to say, in the middle of the night, early this morning, in Armenia, there was an attack from Azerbaijan on a number of different targets. Casualties are still being counted. And we here in Burbank, with the Armenian community, we understand that it's difficult to hear, it's hard news to take, and war is never easy, especially if your family and friends are still back home. So, you know, our hearts go out to the families and communities affected by that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, it's my turn. Let me see, what did I do? I met with a couple representatives, some raising canes. We discussed some of the issues and concerns that are happening down there in the neighborhood. Had the Audit Committee meeting. I filmed a video for MetroLink event that's happening on September 21st. I'll be out of town on that day, so I filmed a welcome video for them that morning. I also attended PAC 225, which was the PAC that I was involved in when my kids were in elementary school. I was an assistant scoutmaster for PAC 225, and they were promoting their popcorn sales. So I was there to take some pictures with the scouts and holding out the popcorn.
Three flavored pens or single ones?
Yeah, no, they're, they're different. I mean, the popcorn is awesome. I had some, of course. Let's see, what else? Oh, I attended the blessing and celebration of the new ER for Providence St. Joseph's Medical Center. I mean, obviously, it brings me a lot of memories, because I was a paramedic, firefighter, paramedic in the original ER. We were transporting patients to the original ER. And my wife, having worked there for 42 years, not the ER, but St. Joe's, there's a lot of memories. I attended the SCAG Transportation Committee meeting. I was invited to attend a VIP tour up to Fort Irwin Training Center. It's an Army base. Now I'm an official member of the Black Horse Squadron. They picked us up at 7:00 in the morning at Bob Hope Airport, Hollywood Burbank Airport. And they flew us up there, took an hour flight to get up in the helicopter. And we did all kinds of, yeah, everything that the Army guys go through. We were suited up in the gear, and we were firing the big arms. I mean, yeah, it was amazing. It was cool. It was cool. Lot of search and rescue. I mean, I remember the days when I was in the fire department, we did that. I'm getting a little older now. Let's see, what else? Well, the ribbon cutting, as Councilmember Schultz mentioned, celebration of the Costa Rican Day. And then went, this past Sunday, we attended the 9/11 flag ceremony in the morning. And then that evening, I attended the Burbank International Film Festival Closing Night Gala and Award Show. You were missing that night. And other than that, I attended a special meeting this morning of the Los In Railroad. But other than that, it's very exciting. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to, now's the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, can we bring back a first-step report on a letter to Congress and President Biden to reenact, or rather, to, sorry, to dismiss the waiver of Section 907, refusing military aid to Azerbaijan?
Anyone else? I've got a couple. Mr. City Manager, I'd just like to have a report on the update on speeding enforcement, what we've been doing. Also, a report on flavored tobacco inspections, and how they're going along, if they're happening. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk of deceleration, where cities are getting together, starting to look at and researching it, what would it take, the pros and cons, how much money. And I think we have to start getting into that discussion. You know, I don't know how active our Burbank Water Power is in gathering information about that, but we've got to start getting some information for the council to start thinking about, what is it going to take? It's going to be very expensive. Can we team up with maybe Metropolitan Water District? Team up with them? I mean, you know, when you go back into the 1920s, when it was put together, the 13 cities, the original 13 cities that got together back in the 20s and spent all those millions of dollars to make sure we got the water from the Colorado River, and I'm sure there were naysayers thinking, you got to be kidding me, you're spending all that money now? Guess what? It's helping us now. That was futuristic, the vision that was there. And there's always going to be naysayers, you know, why are you doing that? Why are you doing, why are you spending the money? We don't need it. You don't have it. But, you know, it just galls me when we stop and think about what they were thinking about 1920s, when they decided to do this. Also, an update on the community service officers' hiring. What's the status of that?
We have, we have been asked.
Yeah, several times, and, you know, out of sight, out of mind. So I just want to bring it out for discussion and just see what's happening, because that's very important. As far as I'm concerned, that's very important. They can do a lot of jobs that are, that are related. Anyway, anything else? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, this goes back to Jay Geisenheimer's request to look at the M1 zones in the Rancho and rezone those. And I think we, I've brought this up, and we've brought it up a few times, so, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's move forward. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, September 27, for a joint meeting in council chambers. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following four ways: in person for general public comment and public hearings, by calling in directly to the council meeting, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, and by emailing the city council directly. So thank you. A reminder, next Tuesday, we have the Boards and Commissions Dinner. So we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Stay safe.